Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We're having some technical difficulties. Thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 meeting. And with that, I will ask the city clerk to establish quorum.
Good evening, Mayor. About working, Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
And Mayor Wickson.
Here. With that, I'd like to take a moment of silence and remembrance of all those in his brain. Thank you. With that, Councilmember Barton, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Close session report, Mr. Newmeyer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No close session items to report tonight.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to council members for reports announcements. And I will look to my right, Councilmember Barton.
Um, I, no announcements.
Councilmember Landrum.
Um, I just want to remind people that I am having a town hall meeting here on Sunday, this Sunday, from two to four, and the subject will be short-term rentals. And again, this is the first of a series of them I plan on doing. So I hope, I hope you'll all come and weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
I have a few items tonight, one of which is I wanted to bring attention to a comprehensive economic development strategic report known as SEDS. The draft form of this report is available to read and comment on until October 12th at www.reachcentralcoast.org. This informative report provides data showing Slow and Santa Barbara Counties' roadblocks, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to our future economic stability. Personally, I look forward to the final draft and how it's applicable to our community and the possible strategies that we, strategies and actions that we can take in our future when dealing with our economic development. Secondly, the downtown design district, along with Councilmember Landrum, kicks off its six-month-long work, scope of work, on October 18th. Its first public meeting will be taking place on November 2nd. Thirdly, I've expressed this numerous times since I began my journey up here on the dais, and I'm finally getting to my neighborhood listening sessions. I have my first one that's going to be focused on North Morro Bay, specifically from Yorba Buena, Zanzibar, to San Jacinto. This is going to be taking place on Sunday, October 29th, from 1:00 to 2:00 at the Community Center Studio, which is the one to the left, right outside the door. The seating is limited, and the reason for that is that this is supposed to be more of an intimate, neighborhood-specific conversation. And I'm essentially looking forward to hearing each person speak and really taking that information back, creating a summary of what we spoke about, and allowing for this information collectively to be used by staff, council, and to be a shared reference tool. So I'm looking forward to that. And I also want to remind you that this won't be the first one. It's going to be ongoing as well. And so I will get back around to neighborhoods. I know it's a small group, so it'll, we'll make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I'll keep mine quick. I just have a couple of event announcements. So I attended the shop, the pencil, that's put on by the Morro Bay Chamber last week, and that was a great event. I always love attending that. If you haven't done it yet, you have to check out the website, catch their next one. It's a great way to get to know our businesses, maybe some businesses you've never been into. But it's a great way to discover new, old, and, you know, just, you might find a favorite shop, is what I'm trying to say. So it was a great event, and this Saturday, the 14th, you can catch me at the Family Fun Day, the Maritime Family Fun Day, at the Maritime Museum over by the smoke stacks. It starts at 10:00 a.m. and goes to 4:00 p.m. I'll be there helping out with their blueberry muffin contest. I think I'm tasting them, and I don't know, but handing them out, doing something. But anyway, I'm involved. I'm excited to be there, and I hope to see many of you there as well. It's a great fam, family-friendly event, and it's free to attend. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage anyone who hasn't yet had an opportunity to buy a duck for the Duck Derby from Rotary to get online, Morro Bay Rotary, and purchase your duck. They'll be swimming the bay before the Family Fun Day. So with that, I'd like to ask our city manager, Ms. Kimball, for announcements and presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, I want to, this is, I want to add a couple events to the mix. And the park recreation manager sent these to me, and I wanted to remind everybody, Morro Bay, we are host, the city is hosting a aquatic pumpkin patch at a swimming pool, apparently, October 22nd. And then we also going to have a Morro Bay trick-or-treat event on Saturday, October 28th. And so if you're, you're interested in either of the events, please contact the city's park and recreation office. And then with that, we, I'm pleased to let the audience and the council and the general public know that the city of Morro Bay had grown our, our team, Team Morro Bay. And then today, we have two public works positions that the Public Works Super, the Public Works Director is going to introduce. With that, Greg, please.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. That's correct. We have two new members of the Public Works team. These are two key positions, and I wanted to introduce these folks. You can come on up. I wanted to introduce these folks to the city council and to the community. Coming up first, we have Austin Della, who is a graduate of Cal Poly Engineering. And Austin has six years' experience in the construction industry and the private, excuse me, private sector. He's done tank inspections. He's done construction management. He's done long-range resource planning, and we're very fortunate to have him. If you may know, there are many, many engineering vacancies that local agencies aren't able to fill, but Austin wanted to come here and work with us, and this completes our engineering team. And Austin will help us implement capital projects, of which we have a few dozen on the books. And also Carlos Mendoza is our new Maintenance Division Manager. Carlos took over about five weeks ago at this point and has already left his mark with a few projects that he's completed. Carlos comes with 18 years' experience at the community of Cambria, at the Cambria CSD, also in a management role there. And so again, we're very lucky to have him, and Carlos will be point on all maintenance issues around the city, including parks, harbor, trees, sidewalks, and things of that nature. So if you guys want to just say a couple words.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Yeah, just really excited to be able to serve the city and the community.
Good afternoon, City Council and members of the public. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the community of Morro Bay. As Greg mentioned, I spent 23 years with the Cambria Community Services District, taking care of their parks, open spaces, facilities. I'm happy to be here. I've been here now for about five weeks and have enjoyed every day. I've enjoyed coming to work with a great team at Public Works and also great professionals at the Maintenance Division. I'm looking forward to many years and again, appreciate the, the opportunity.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the city of Morro Bay. We appreciate you being here. And I see there are several other members from Public Works here this evening, too. Thank you. Harbor Director Chapon, anything for update on offshore wind?
Um, I can't say that, Mayor. Thank you for that, City Council. There's not anything happening directly right now. We are getting communication from the leaseholders who need to get their draft communication plan in place. So I've been attending those meetings online and listening to those, and we have the opportunity to, to comment on those, but nothing specifically right now. We are working towards a webpage for the city website so that our residents and visitors can access information regarding offshore wind.
Thank you. Thank you for that comprehensive report with our joint meeting. And I would remind the community that there is a offshore wind summit November 1st, 4:00 p.m. in San Luis Obispo at the County Government Center, and there will be more information coming out. We do not have a presentation this evening. Unfortunately, they had a scheduling conflict. So with that, I'm going to open public comment, and I'm going to start with my speaker slips. And the first up is Becky Jorgensen, followed by Jamie Irons.
Good evening, everyone. Does that mean I can have more time to talk?
Three minutes.
Becky Jorgensen from Hope's Village. We are a 501(c)(3) public charity California corporation. And we're here to ask for your approval tonight to bring our tiny house village to Morro Bay. We've been studying this for 10 years. We have visited other small tiny house communities. It's a very viable solution to a lot of our homeless people who don't have a chance in the world of getting in to housing. San Luis has four projects on the board now in the last year. We're going to build a village of tiny homes. Everyone will work. It'll be a clean and sober living environment. It will not be a rental situation. It will be a program fee of about a third of their income. We're just real excited about it. We just need the land. We've got 312 donors. We've passed on 132 vehicles. We've provided close to 6,000 showers for people who had no other way to get clean. What else can I tell you? We're all volunteers. All we need is the land, and we can do the rest. So please give us the opportunity to come give you a full-blown presentation. Thank you very much. Call me with any questions. Thank you.
Jamie Irons, Morro Bay. It's honorable what you all are doing as our elected officials. Thank you for your dedication and sacrifice to our community. It's not easy to govern, and misunderstanding the process can lead to misrepresenting the process and mischaracterizing a person. Mayor Heading has been mischaracterized recently through the citizens' initiative process. During public comment, backdoor deals were attributed to Mayor Heading. The deal in question was a contract signed by Mayor Heading, a contract by the city of Morro Bay and Vistra, the details of which ensured the water reclamation facility had access for pipelines, of course, money, the release of obtaining a power plant property for a dollar should certain requirements not be met. The process for that transaction to take place is similar to what the current council is going through right now with the Morro Elementary School. A closed session is noticed publicly, the context of which identifies the parties involved. We don't know what the current council is negotiating, nor did we know what was being negotiated with Vistra. The process, however, evolves. Council directs staff and the city staff carries out the negotiations until agreement is met, at which time a staff report, along with the agreed-upon contract, is brought forth at a city council meeting, typically on consent, at which time the community can object or on the agreement or disagree. Council can then vote to approve the contract, which the mayor then signs on behalf of the city council. Mischaracterizing Mayor Heading as making a backdoor deal is unfounded and sad. Mayor Headed, Heading did nothing wrong. He carried out his duty and signed a contract approved by city council. It's okay to disagree with a city council decision, but what must we demonize someone? At last city council meeting, there was a misunderstanding as well in the process. Jerry Luer's project was on consent. His project had been approved by a planning commission, appealed to city council by Betty Winholz, where public testimony was taken, and the merits of the project were discussed, compromised, and then approved by city council. The result of city council decision for Jerry Luer's project was on consent. It was the formal step in the process. Councilmember Landrum pulled the item to change your decision, which is perfectly fine. However, changing a council decision on consent is not the correct process. Council was gently and respectfully brought back on track by our city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. That's not easy either. No different than our contract that is on consent to be approved with the city of Morro Bay and the Morro Elementary or Vistra, for that matter. There was the desire to make a change. If there was a desire to make a change to go, then the two parties would have to go back and work it out. Same goes for Jerry Luer's project, back to another public hearing where he could be present to participate and defend his project. Governing is hard. Trusting the process is a quest, and it's still sometimes misunderstood. Thank you for your service, Mayor Heading.
Next up is Linda Winters, followed by Marla McPherson.
Good evening, city council members, staff, police and fire. Police, no fire. So how about that heat wave? I don't really tolerate heat at all. Anything above 76 is just, if you're around me, you literally take your life in your hands. I even posted a sign on my door, "If you value your life away, at all, stay away from Linda Winters." I know it's October, and we get those San Luis Obispo winds every year. I prepare for them. I don't like them, but I do prepare. And speaking of preparing, quite a segue. I'm hearing more and more reports of another wet winter. Another El Nino year is forecast. This is October 10th, seven short months ago, on March 10th of 2023. We experienced our last flooding within Main Street and 41 Corridor, where there are at least four mobile home parks that sit in the floodplain zone. The park owners don't want to hear that. It's bad advertising for potential residents, but hey, guess what? Full disclosure, your property is in floodplain. So here's my advice to all these folks that live in the, those parks. Be prepared. Be like those scouts. Be ready for the possibility of another flood. And if it doesn't happen, you can say, yay, but I was ready. And if it does happen, you can say, yay, I was ready. If those emergency kits together now, then you can enjoy this beautiful time of the year. My mantra, be prepared, be prepared. As Shimon, I want to go celebrate the fall. The witches paddle, the hella, Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. And of course, every single Monday night for karate dinner. And I will show you a picture. I don't know if this is going to show up. But this is March 10th, 2023. That's a mobile home park near me. It's, it's actually my mobile home park. Be prepared, folks, and I'll see you on October 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Eric Four. Oh, sorry, Marla. I was getting ahead of myself.
Yes, you are. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I am here. My name is Marla McPherson, Morro Bay. And I'm here tonight to give you another event occurring in October. So yeah, it's going to be a busy October, and this is a really fun one. It's sponsored by the Historical Society of Morro, Morro Bay. And it was, will take place on Sunday, October 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. And on that day, the Historical Society will be reenacting an unusual historical event. It happened in 1867. Franklin Riley, who is the European founder of Morro Bay, found a body on his property. The body, and this is the interesting part, the body was missing a head and, spoiler alert, also the hands. On July 28th, 1869, a coroner's jury was deciding the cause of death of the headless corpse. So we are going to reenact that coroner's jury. The event is free and open to the public. And that's Sunday, October 22nd, 3:00 p.m. at Calvary Lutheran Church, 480 Monterey Avenue. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Four, followed by Glenn Sullaway.
Good evening, council and mayor. I came down here to comment on the, one of the items that you're going to be discussing later. But I have a general comment that I thought would be appropriate to start with. As we started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, it is fitting to remember that we are basically all under the jurisdiction of Constitution in the United States. And preamble to the Constitution outlines seven obligations that, why we form a government to begin with. And one of them, and the one I would like to remind us all to remember as, as we pass on whatever we're talking about, is to promote the general welfare. It is my observation that so many meetings are involved in personal money transactions involving the city that I would just like us to all reflect, particularly on this item we're going to be talking about in a little bit. What is its impact on the general welfare? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for some time here. I have yet another event to announce to you in October. This one is being sponsored, co-sponsored by the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, along with the Beaver Brigade and several other conservation-related organizations. Now, the Beaver Brigade is going to be more commonly talked about here because we have formed a basic partnership with them to work to reestablish beavers on the watershed of the estuary. They provide free cleaning services, and we're hoping to be able to, to acquire that for us. The Beaver Brigade has found a guy named Ben Goldfarb, who is a conservation author. He's written the book about Eager, Why You Should Care About Beavers. And he's also going to, he's written a recent book on how roads affect our environment and the ecology. He's going to be giving a talk about that at the Public Library in Slow on Monday, October 23rd, at 6:30 p.m. It's obviously, it's a free event, and it's going to be interesting. He will be there to talk about beavers if you want to ask him, because he wrote a book about that, as I mentioned. And it's a good place to learn about why we should care about this. So once again, Ben Goldfarb, talking about beavers and roads. The Public Library in Slow, 6:30 p.m., Monday, October 23rd. I hope you see, I hope you show up. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker slip is Nicole Dorfman, and I'll follow that with the Morro Bay 4-H Club, please.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Dorfman, and I am here tonight on behalf of the Friday Group. And we would like to invite everyone here to yet another event this month. This one is a screening of the short documentary called Throne to the Wind. It's on Sunday, October 22nd, at 2:00 p.m. at the Morro Bay Community Center. This event is free and open to the public. We are asking for a $5 donation just to cover the costs, but nobody will, nobody will be turned away for, because of the lack of the ability to pay. This film, I did have a trailer, but it sounds like it's not working, so. Anyways, this film is produced by Michael Schellenberger, who has been an investigative journalist and environmental activist for over 30 years. He's testified before and advised governments around the world on climate change and resiliency, among other important topics. Using the latest research, this documentary challenges the corporate and government narrative that the offshore wind industry's actions are unrelated to increases in whale deaths on the East Coast. I hope to see you on the 22nd, if you're at all interested in how offshore wind energy and the industrialization of our ocean might impact marine mammals, whales, and others. I urge you to come. Again, it'll be Sunday, October 22nd, at 2:00 p.m. at the Morro Bay Community Center. If you have any questions, please email MBFridayGroup@proton.me. That's MB, MB for Morro Bay, FridayGroup@proton.me. Thank you, and I hope to see you there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name's Tammy Haas. I'm the Morro Bay 4-H Club leader. Last week was National 4-H Week, and we'd like to let you know that Morro Bay has a very active club with 30 members and nine adult volunteers.
What 4-H stands for is head, heart, hands, and health.
4-H is the largest youth development program in the nation. Morro Bay 4-H Clubs currently has projects in leadership, sewing, garden, breeding beef, swine, sheep, rabbit, poultry, fishing, painting, food nutrition, hiking, and community service. 4-H motto, to make the best better.
Did you know there are 60 million alumni in 4-H?
Morro Bay 4-H Club meets the first Tuesday of month, 6:30 p.m. at the Benedict Center.
You can email MorroBay4H@morobay4hclub@yahoo.com for more information.
Thank you, Morro Bay 4-H. With that, public comment is open.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I just found out I'm a member of the 600,000 4-H alumni. And I will say, in support of the 4-H, it was a very meaningful part of my youth, and it's probably why I have the composure to stand up here and talk to you every week or every other week. My main reason for being here tonight, and I've forwarded some materials to you that hopefully you've gotten. I wouldn't expect you to have read through them and digested them yet. I'm still working on that process myself, but there are some things happening that I, I believe are significant to the future of Morro Bay's water, which I think we all recognize is a critical element of life in Morro Bay. The wind, the sun, the ocean is great, but if you can't drink the water and brush your teeth, you're going to be in trouble. So number one, the Los Osos Community Services District, a subset of the county board of supervisors, has recently started the review process of an environmental document wherein, to basically shorten it, they are asking for 200 acre sheet of water from the state, which the county has the ability to give to them. But they're asking that it be delivered through a pipeline that there is some controversy as to whether there's the capacity to deliver that to Los Osos without impinging upon our need to continue to get state water. I think in the materials that I forwarded you, I outlined fundamentally what my thoughts on the matter are. But to, just to summarize, I think that Morro Bay should retain control of the pipeline, and I think we should enter into an agreement with Los Osos to deliver them initially our reclaimed water. to deliver them initially our reclaimed water instead of sending it out into the ocean, which we're currently doing until such time as we have a more defined reuse program in place. And that when and if we have that ability to reduce our demand for state water that we participate with Los Osos in getting them the state water that they feel that they need. I could go into detail, but I think what I've sent you is enough to start with. But I would really encourage you to agendize this for future action to give direction to Public Works to prepare a response. And I don't know what the timeline is for the current E I R., but it's out in draft now. So it's obviously they're looking for comment. I think the city has an obligation to comment on that draft E I R. That Los Osos Community Services District is looking to bring a program into our area to take state water. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Paul Donnelly of Morro Bay. Although you canceled this presentation, I wanted to speak to the Climate Action Plan the city has. It hasn't been updated in about nine years now, I guess. But the thing is, is that the goal was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city. However, started in twenty twenty, the city started its construction of the wastewater treatment plant out on Teresa Drive. And then later the construction of the pipelines to provide sewage to that plant. And so a lot of equipment was emitting a lot of emissions. You could probably equate it to the amount of fuel they purchased. And then there was used in that for almost three years continuously of emissions that I'm sure it was a negative on our goal. The other thing is, is that every year we have a lot of tourists coming into town and they back up traffic all the way to the rock and all those cars trying to leave or idling and still emitting emissions. So I don't know what this Climate Action Plan update was supposed to do, but you you have to consider what has happened in the last three years. Thank you.
How about another event? Betty Winholz, this is about dogs. El Choro Regional Dog Park has an annual party for dogs and humans. It'll be not this Saturday, but a week from this Saturday. And it's free. It starts at ten thirty at El Choro Regional Park, which is across the street from Cresta College. And everyone with a dog is invited. Put this on the back table.
Good evening. It's really great to be here. I feel like we're becoming friends, you know, I see the familiar faces. I love living in Morro Bay, as I know a lot of you do. Moved here four years ago and work here out of my home. I'm fortunate to be able to do that. But I want to talk a little bit about green energy, but let me start by saying that I saw we're hiring a best facility safety consulting. I think that's very important to do that. But honestly, I wish we weren't, I cringe that we have to do that. Why, why would we let somebody come in and put our community at risk? I know some of the staff and the city council has gone to see the battery facilities up at more at Moss Landings. I've inspected battery facilities in my past, too. They're always really clean. I mean, you just could almost eat your lunch right there. It's so clean and they have to do that so it doesn't catch on fire. But what I would encourage you to do is go to the next major battery fire at one of these facilities and see what it looks like then and talk to the community because you're not getting a fair representation for what what we're afraid of here. And then I want to segue into green energy. Somebody said at the last meeting, we all want green energy, right? Well, not so fast. What what do you mean by green energy? Let's unpeel the onion a little bit. Who's it going to help? Who's it going to hurt? Is it going to hurt the whales? I mean, that's a big question on all of our minds. And the other thing I want to point out is that, you know, I think I told you last time that I used to be a nuclear power Navy nuclear power submarine officer. So I know a lot about nuclear power, pressurized water reactors in particular. And I have a lot of science in my background. And I wanted to point out to you that we are rushing to shut down Diablo Canyon and rushing to put up turbines. So we have a a proven technology with Diablo Canyon. We should be building a new unit at Diablo Canyon and forget about the turbines. In fact, build a couple of three units, we could supply the whole state and they're non-polluting. They don't have any emissions. There's a question about waste, but the waste has been handled safely by these places for many years. So why are we shutting down Diablo Canyon? I predict in ten to fifteen years, we'll be tearing down those turbines because they will become uneconomical. And I just, I'm about to run out of time, but you know, we had a tsunami at and it killed three of the six reactors Fukushima in Japan. You know what? They said, we are never gonna, let me finish, I'm almost done. We are never going to build nuclear power. We're going to shut them all down. Last year, they said we are going to increase capacity. We're going to start them all up, increase capacity from six percent to twenty-two percent. Why are they doing that? And you know, they got hit pretty hard, but they're increasing capacity. We should be doing the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we went and talked to some of the people at Protect Diablo, and they thought it'd be impossible to do next to hotels. That the long road, the secluded area, the elevations protections are just so much more advantageous to protect than putting it right there. So anyway, we have some wonderful interviews with those people with firefighters from Maui, from California. And December twenty-second is the date for shooting for for the film during the holidays. So we encourage everybody just to hear what the people have to say.
Hello, my name's Les Montgomery. I'm a tribal member from a tribal council of the Slennons here. And I just wanted to say tonight that I wanted to talk about the name to for the sanctuary. Yeah, I like to propose the indigenous people, people of the Central Coast National, National Marine Sanctuary. We have many tribes not to consider, not just one. But that name or a name that's all inclusive for all the tribes here seems fair to me. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I'm sure you've probably already heard this comment before, but I'm just saying it again. I think we're going to have a meeting here pretty quick with our tribal council, and we're going to be talking about it some more. So more to come on that, but give you something to think about. So thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? A G P? Thank you.
Speak on Zoom, you're here, you should be allowed to speak.
Okay, I believe, I believe I can speak now.
All right, Carol, you should be able to speak now. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Hello? I'll trust you can. Dear Morro Bay City Council Members, my name is Carol Minzer. I live in I live in Los Osos, and I'm speaking as the Chair of the Santa Lucia Chapter of the Sierra Club. The Santa Lucia Chapter has about twenty-five hundred members across San Luis Obispo County and has supported designation of the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary for over ten years. An economic impact study completed in two thousand fourteen predicted that the marine sanctuary would bring a minimum of twenty-three million dollars per year to the local economy and create about six hundred new jobs. And I'm sure by now those numbers are even larger. We are now in the final comment period prior to designation of
We're having some issues with Zoom, getting the audio for the people that are talking on there. So if you could give us a few minutes to get that all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, please let me know when they're able to come through. Thank you, everyone, for sharing all the events. I think we'll have a busy October. And I'm going to ask you a question, Greg.
Okay, so Carol, you could go ahead and talk now.
Going to be a few minutes. Okay, now I'm unmuted. Am I good? Hello? Okay, thank you. Can you hear me in the room now? Hello, can you hear? Sorry for the delay. We're having audio.
Violet, are you, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Violet, are you there? Can you speak?
I'm unmuted. Am I, everyone can hear me?
Okay, it's definitely an audio issue on our end. Unfortunately, it's going to take us probably a few more minutes to fix it, Madam Mayor. How, I don't know how you want.
Thank you. With that, I will ask Mr. Qualick, if you have any comment regarding the question about the E I R. and the city, is the city commenting on that?
Sure, no problem, Mayor. And thank you for the question. Just want to clarify that it is a mitigated negative declaration, not an E I R. But yes, Los Osos Community Services District has a draft initial study in mitigative, excuse me, mitigated negative declaration for connecting their water system directly to the state water pipe. And that is open for public comment until October twenty-seventh. Anyone wishing to make public comments could reach out to Los Osos C S D directly. It's not something that the city of Morro Bay is driving. Certainly, well, the Public Works Department is interested in giving some public comment based on council direction that I'll be coming back to council next meeting with. Some some recommendation. We plan to go to P WAB first next week to discuss it with them. We only learned of this like last week, so we're putting something together quickly. And with our next city council meeting, we'll still have some time before the public comment period closes. So our meeting, I believe, is on twenty-fourth, and that's due on the twenty-seventh. So city council will have the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Hello, Violet, are you able to hear us now?
I I can hear you.
Excellent. We have, it's ready to work now, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry about the delay. This is Violet Sage. She's our first speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Violet Sage Walker. I'm the chairwoman for the Northern Schumash Tribal Council, also the nominator for the proposed Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. And I come here tonight just to remind, a lot of, a lot of us are new to each other. And just to remind the city of Morro Bay that the Schumash have been partnering and working together with the city of Morro Bay going back more than forty years and more than three generations. And I would like to request that the new leadership in the city of Morro Bay reexamine their position on the proposed marine sanctuary. Last year, your former mayor submitted a letter that clearly stated that Morro Bay was not interested in being within the sanctuary boundaries. And I just would like to ask that the Morro Bay City Council, you know, revisit that decision and hopefully with better information and more relevant to the current circumstances that we're in today and things that we're facing that there is a proposed gap between the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary and what would be the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary of approximately thirty miles and twenty-seven hundred square miles of ocean being left out of the sanctuary, including the area around Morro Bay. I would urge you to read the decision that was made by the Cayucus C S D. about wanting to be included in the marine sanctuary. I hope that Cambria will follow, and I hope that you can address this in a timely manner because like other events, the last open public comment for the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary will be October twelfth at one P M. On the virtual meeting platform on the NOAA website, or you can go to schumash sanctuary dot org for information about the meeting. And the final public comment will end October twenty-fifth. So on October twenty-sixth, they will start the review process. And I really want Morro Bay City Council and the residents of Morro Bay to know that they have been left out of the marine sanctuary. And the effects of that will probably be not only economic, but disastrous to potential industrial corridors that have no marine sanctuary protection. I do believe, and I've always said, the offshore winds should be compatible with marine sanctuaries. I'd be happy to talk to staff, talk to anybody that wants to listen. But I do believe that we can have both strategically planned and compatible. And so what we can't do is argue over a name because the only name that matters is that it's a marine sanctuary. And so there's no point in arguing over something that Morro Bay will not be included in. So I just want to reiterate that, that it's important that Morro Bay is at the table. It's important that the fishermen and the community members know that they're being left out of the marine sanctuary. And once we have a marine sanctuary, then we can talk about things like a name, things about regulations, things about a sanctuary advisory council, and who would be on that. But the most important thing is that we have a sanctuary. And I appreciate your time and hopefully willingness to revisit the previous council's decision to be excluded from the National Marine Sanctuary Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to speak, available to speak will be Carol Minzer. Sorry if I butchered your name. One moment.
Great. I hope you can hear me now. Great, my name is Carol Minzer. I live in Los Osos, and I'm speaking as the Chair of the Santa Lucia Chapter of the Sierra Club. The Santa Lucia Chapter has about twenty-five hundred members across San Luis Obispo County and has supported designation of the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary for over ten years. An economic impact study completed An economic impact study completed in 2014 predicted that the marine sanctuary would bring a minimum of $23 million per year to the local economy and create almost 600 new jobs. And I'm sure those numbers are even larger by now. We are now in the final comment period prior to the designation of the marine sanctuary. And I hope you will get on board by supporting the Schumash Sanctuary designation. We especially ask you to advocate for inclusion of the waters from Los Osos to Cambria, which of course includes Morro Bay. The sea otters and other marine life that make this area their home or travel through it will thank you. As will the Chamber of Commerce when they can tell the world that Morro Bay is a gateway city to the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. Please consider adding a resolution of support for the marine sanctuary to your next city council meeting agenda. Thank you. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The last person we have is the NCTC team. You should be allowed to talk now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Gianna Patchen. I am a Slow County resident and campaign manager for the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. Thank you all for your time today and for listening to our remarks. I will be reflecting a lot of what Chair Walker and Carol Minzer shared earlier today. I ask you, the Morro Bay City Council, to reconsider your previous position on the Schumash Sanctuary and to submit a letter to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration in support of the Schumash Sanctuary designation. The community of Morro Bay and Northern Slow County are at risk of being excluded from the sanctuary and at risk of losing access to all the wonderful things that come with a sanctuary. This includes ecosystem and local community health. It includes clean waters for us all to recreate and enjoy. It includes local business and economic benefits and community programs that can benefit us all for decades and hopefully centuries to come. And there's so much more that a sanctuary can bring. The health of our ocean is pivotal to fisheries, to our local health and to our local economy. I ask for the Morro Bay City Council's support for the inclusion of the waters from Los Osos to Cambria in the Schumash Sanctuary. We want you all to be part of the sanctuary with us and part of making our ocean health an integral part of our community. And I ask you to help us ensure that the stretch of our ocean and our local communities are not left vulnerable. We ask that the city council add the consideration of a resolution in support of the Schumash Sanctuary to the next city council meeting agenda as well. Thank you.
And with that, Madam Mayor, we have completed all our raised hands.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any questions? Anybody? Pretty good. I'll move on to the consent agenda and open public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, Terry Simons, are you envisioning commenting individually on the items or just items that are pulled? In which case I can either comment on item five, should it be pulled, or I can comment on item five now, your preference.
No.
Item five, it appears to me is a reaffirmation of an issue that I believe you discussed at closed session. I may have it wrong. I tried to clarify that with city attorney and I think he's brought some clarity to my reading of it. But the appearance of it is that in your closed session today, you discussed about labor negotiations and then now you're basically moving forward with a very specific subset of those labor negotiations without any, any real support of how you came to that conclusion. Perhaps the city attorney could reaffirm what he told me about why this is happening, the way it's happening. It's a little confusing in the way it is in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. And Mr. Newmeyer, I think probably clarity that they weren't the same items.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Simons and I spoke briefly before the meeting and he had a very good question about if we were having a labor negotiation item in closed session today. Is that the same item the council is now approving a few hours later? I pointed out, and the public should know that there are different items that the council can consider for labor negotiations. And also it's a public fact that the MOUs the city has with its bargaining units, there will be negotiations next year. So it's important for the city council to be prepared for those. There are other labor issues that come up throughout the year. So just because there happens to be a labor item on the public agenda doesn't mean that that necessarily is the item that the council discussed in closed session earlier that day. There's multiple labor issues that the city has to deal with.
Thank you. And it in fact was not.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I will ask for a motion, or excuse me, does anyone want to pull anything on the consent agenda? No, with that, I'll ask for a motion for items A1 through A7 on the consent agenda.
I'm, I move that we approve the consent agenda items A1 through A7. I second that.
Thank you. Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we're going to, oh, not going to. I'm going to ask council permission, please, to move item C1, which is consideration of conditional appointment of Steve Conway as the interim assistant city manager, admin service director and conditional approval of employment agreement between the City of Morro Bay and Steve. Up because it will only take a few minutes to, is everyone okay with that? Perfect with that. We will move real quickly to item C1 before we begin our public hearing items and I will ask our human resources director to join us. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Rachel Hendricks, Human Resources Manager. Tonight, I'm here to present to the council consideration of a conditional appointment of Steve Conway as our interim assistant city manager, administrative services director, and ask for conditional approval of the employment agreement between the City of Morro Bay and Steve Conway. As you know, Sarah Johnson Rios, the former Assistant City Manager Administrative Service Director, is leaving the city for another position. The city has begun the recruitment process for a replacement. However, the process is expected to take a number of months. While the city conducts a recruitment for Ms. Johnson Rios's replacement, the city would like to appoint Steve Conway as interim assistant city manager, administrative services director. Steve Conway comes to the City of Morro Bay as a former finance director with over 25 years of public sector finance experience and a CPA. He was most recently the finance director for the City of Los Gatos for 21 years. The contract in your agenda packet details Steve Conway's hourly wage with no benefits as a retired Calpersa Newanton is not eligible for any benefits beyond the established salary range for the position. Staff asks that council appoint Steve Conway as the interim assistant city manager, administrative services director, and authorize the city manager to execute his employment contract. If approved, Steve Conway will start next Monday, October 16th. Steve is currently on a bike tour, so he wasn't able to join us tonight. So he will be introduced to the next city council meeting. Any questions?
Question, excuse me, any questions for? Thank you. Give me a few minutes. And with that, I will open public comment on item C1. And I see someone behind you, Rachel. Thank you.
Seems like I'm up here a lot these days, Terry Simons. I wasn't ready to speak on C1, but when it got relocated, I'll do my best. I'm continuing to be supportive of the city's efforts to recruit and retain quality personnel, good quality personnel. I haven't had a chance to really review the resume of Steve Conway. It's my understanding he's an interim. Sounds like from Human Resources that he's well qualified for the position. Begs the question, why we don't put him on full time? Maybe that'll happen. I don't know. But expressing my general concern and my general belief that we really need to make every effort to support our staff. One of the reasons that I wanted to speak in the earlier item about staff negotiations with wages and benefits was to make the point that it is the wages and benefits packages that are being offered and given to our employees. That seems to be the root of why we're not able to retain the employees. Most recent, Ms. Del Rios, incredible loss. Her predecessor, Jennifer, an incredible loss. Depending on how you feel about our former city manager compared to our new city manager, it's hard to say, but I miss him. And I think that while he stayed four years, I would have preferred that he'd been here for 10 or 15. I think that most, the higher up you get in the organization, the more time it takes to integrate into the program, take control of your department, or in the case of city manager, the entire city. We need to do a better job of bringing people in and compensating them, not just with money, but the overall support by the council so that they stay. And I would hope that as we go for this new assistant manager position, we'll make every effort, both financially, socially. More parties, I don't know what it takes, but whatever it takes, we need to do a better job of recruitment, retention of the, the employees that we need to run the city. Thank you.
And now for counterpoint.
Now for the counterpoint. Betty Winholz, I would just like to, it's tangential to his appointment, but as we search for the new person, I would hope that it would be strictly a financial person, not an assistant city manager. I'm not sure that we're large enough to do that. And certainly bringing in someone new to be the assistant when we have a new person is kind of odd. But nothing about that, just that I would hope as HR looks at our new position that the council would consider making that new person have one responsibility, not two. And maybe that's part of retention is not expecting so much because we tend to overburden our staff.
Anyone else for public comment on item C1? AGP?
Madam Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any comments?
Just that I'm thankful that our staff found somebody so quickly and so qualified. So, welcome.
Thank you. With that, I will ask for a motion for item C1.
Motion to accept the city council appoint Steve Conway as the interim assistant city manager, administrative service director, contingent upon successfully passing the city's background check and authorize the city manager to execute the attached employment agreement following the name.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Rachel. With that, we will move on to our public hearing item. First public hearing item B1, public hearing and consideration of Morro Bay garbage service rate adjustment application and adoption of Resolution 6823. And with that, I will turn it over to staff for report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. Tonight, we have a public hearing on a proposed waste collection rate increase. I'd like to remind everyone in the room that the city staff did bring a comprehensive report to the city council on August 8th of this year. And in that report, we outlined what the request meant for the city, what obligations the city had. Because of that request from the hauler, we talked about the initial, the initial request for rate increase, how the city staff negotiated that down. We talked about comparison rates in other cities. We talked in, in communities on the central coast and a number of other items related to this request. Tonight, we're not going to go through all of that. We're, Janine is going to give a short presentation that will touch on, on some of the items at a high level. But I do, I do want to let you know that we still are all here to answer any kinds of questions. With the exception of our third-party consultant, R3 Consulting, who did the initial evaluation and found that the rate increase request was, was reasonable. We do have assistant city attorney Lana Lehman on Zoom in case there's any legal questions. And we also have two representatives from the waste hauler, Kyle Vandenberg and Jeffrey Clarence. So again, we're all here for questions after the presentation and I'll kick it over to Janine.
Thank you and good evening. So as was mentioned, the rate adjustment application was submitted in December of 2022. The initial application was showing a projected revenue shortfall to cover the expenditures and was proposing a 30.62% increase to the and it was proposing a 30.62% increase to the solid waste rates. It also had a proposed effective date of March 1st of this year. It was, was noted in the application, this was, this rate increase was proposed due to post-pandemic inflation that affected the supply chain. It affected wages, increased materials costs due to that, as well as in conjunction, the revenues were lower than what were expected because the recycling market had a influx, an excess of recyclable materials. And the rates for those materials had not rebounded appropriately after those initial downturns. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about the, the hauler agreement that we have that in, in there, in Article 8 that talks about the rate structure, how rates are established. It allows for both the city and the, and the hauler to adjust those rates after going through a 218 process. And it does also allow for inflationary or CPI adjustments to occur as well. And in addition, those two have to go through a 218 process. We've gone over a little bit on the, the process and procedures and evaluation was done by a third-party consultant. So there were some findings that were made. Those were discussed with, between the hauler, the third-party consultant and staff from the city. The result of that was a negotiation down of some of those expenditure items that resulted in a, that initial increase of 30.62% to come down to 20.2%. And I can go into a little more detail on which, which of those expenditures, if you'd like me to, but we had, we had noted those previously that were changes relating to cost adjustments for either the calculation methodology like depreciation or based on industry standards at the time. So with that, the rates that the cost, I should say, for providing the services were negotiated down. And that resulted in a change in the percentage that was being asked as an increase to the, the, the rates needed for revenue to come in from the rate structure. And so as mentioned, that was coming down to 20.2%. The original application had a proposed effective date of March 1. Obviously, it took some time to go through the evaluation and the negotiations. And so a revised effective date for those rates was proposed as October 15th. Should the council go through the, the 218 process and not a majority protest occurs. And those rates are adopted by council. So with that, there's a seven-month period of time that those increased costs were continuing to occur for the services. And so a temporary retroactive increase of 18.38% is proposed for a nine-month period of time to recoup those increased expenditures during that seven-month window. And then after the nine months, that increase, that temporary increase would expire and come off of the bills. As was noted, the agreement allows for the ability to also include CPI adjustments to 18, going through the 218 process. So we've included Uh, 218, going through the 218 process. So we've included that as well in this 218 process. There's some requirements for 218, um including noticing, holding a public hearing, allowing for a a protest, a majority protest process. So the notices were mailed out 45 days prior to the public hearing tonight. They were mailed out on August 23rd. And in that notice, it detailed the process for how to go about um submitting a a protest uh to the the city uh protesting the the proposed rates. So tonight, one of the things that we're asking the council to do during the public hearing is to open the public hearing and receive testimony and written protests if there are any new ones that come in um that had not been received prior to this evening's meeting. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, uh, the city clerk will be asked by the mayor to provide a statement of how many written protests have been received um at the close of the public hearing. As far as the majority protests, there's a requirement in 218 uh that if there are more than 50% of the affected properties that submit a a valid written protest, then the requested or the proposed rate increases would not occur. So with that, uh, staff has um multiple recommendation. The first is to open the public hearing. The second is to take that public testimony and accept any additional written protests. At the close of the public hearing, uh, then we request the mayor to ask the city clerk to provide a count of all written protests received. And provided there is not a majority, excuse me, protest against the proposed rates uh increase to adopt Resolution 68 dash 23 and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the franchise agreement with the hauler to replace the maximum rate schedule with the newly adopted rate schedule. With that, I will turn it over to the council and the mayor uh for any questions uh or comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burlingame. Appreciate that. Um, questions of staff? My left? Questions of staff?
Okay, I have a few. Um, let's see here. I'm gonna start with um. Okay, uh, in the last meeting regarding this issue or this topic, um, I had asked, you know, about um the ability to offer reduced rates for lower income folks that qualify, how that had been, that's no longer, my understanding is it's no longer a thing with a trash. So, um, and that's true. Our information that's being provided, let's say this does pass um tonight, and we raise the rates. Is there information out there um for people who have are forced to end their trash service? Uh, like a way for them to dispose of the trash um so that we're not, you know, searching for other people's bins and filling their bins with people's trash, that kind of situation. Is there, is there any options that will be available to people?
So are you referring to a a lower um service level than the 19 gallon container?
No, um, I think it was called CARE. Um, it was offered to low income individuals and maybe they like to come talk.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, maybe that's something Jeff Clarence can can address more. That's a program that they were or have been the ones uh initiating and 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 managing. So he may have more information on.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Councilmember Ford, uh, that care support number was like that P G D cares package program. And um, I mean, I'll let the city attorney speak, but with Prop 218, you know, with mandatory service, we can't charge a different service for the same service. So a lot of that care program went away. We are willing to work with the city to figure out another way to do that. It's just we cannot charge for that service at a cheaper rate for that same type of service.
Can I ask a follow up question to that then?
Sure.
Um, so let's say we can't reduce anyone's rates. Um, is there a way to have some drop trash drop off area that's like a smaller rate to for people that, I mean, I guess it'd be the dump. But I mean, that's kind of far away. Is there some sort of alternative service? Because rates are going up all over our county. We have a lot of people on fixed incomes. This is going to be a huge hardship. And it's going to be hard for me to face my neighbors in the grocery store when they're like, you, you know, if we raise the the trash rates, you know, it's it's a, it's a vital service and we want to keep our city clean.
Well, there's two, there, there's been two cleanup weeks per year and we just had one in Morro Bay last week. So at that point, you can actually put up to six bags of trash and if uh you get a reduced rate on bulky items. So that happened all over Morro Bay last week. So we do one in October and we do one in uh February, March.
Okay.
So that's typically, instead of going to the landfill, it's actually picked up at the service residence.
Okay.
So um, and Councilmember Ford, it's going back to Janine's point. Um, anyone who is, so I'm, I'm just looking here at the, at the rates that we provided at our last meeting um on August 8th, with with the increases, including the retroactive payment, the 19 gallon bin is is around 20 bucks a month. So it's, it's much more affordable compared to the larger bins. And so the suggestion would be that if anyone was having trouble paying the bill, that they might try to reduce their waste and go with a smaller bin.
It's actually, that's a great segue to my next question. Um, Director Qualick. So my next question is, I mean, I my, I'll be honest, we're, we're in the process of reducing our size of bins with this possible increase on the horizon, um, which is a good thing because we're getting creative with the way we dispose of our items. But at the same time, if we see a massive drop in people's sizes of bins, then there's less rates being paid to you. Does that lead to a rate increase again? Because everybody's reducing their bills by reducing their can size. And I, I don't know, just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, the tough part where the rate making, it's, it's, it's something you have to try and foresee the future. So if that ended up happening, we'll have to do a look back and um that could be something in the future we'd have to discuss with the city. But yes, there is a potential of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question regarding the retroactive fee. Um, I see that it's, you know, being proposed for a nine month period. Um, if that's something that we would be forced to pay as rate payers, I'm curious if it has to be nine months or if we could extend it past nine months to reduce the rate. Is it required to be done in nine months? Or is that something we could do over like a two year or just some way to bring that down for rate payers?
It, it's not a requirement. It was something that was negotiated with the hauler. Um, and they were looking at different, you know, three, six, nine months. So that may be a question to um that we could have a, or have see if it's something that the hauler might be interested in. Um, it, it just is dependent on what their finances are and whether carrying those additional costs further out and how that impacts um their bottom line.
Yeah, because part of it, we did it on a good faith, like Janine said earlier. We never charged interest. Uh, we did negotiated. We, we discussed nine months. So that's kind of how it ended.
Is that the biggest stretch you can do?
I'd probably have to go back to my team, but right now nine months is what was negotiated that time.
Okay.
And uh, if I may, Councilmember Ford, uh, I'm asking Lana Layman, who's who's on the line, if we did make changes to the rates as presented in the Prop 218, would that necessitate us going through the Prop 218 process again? Lana, are you able to hear me? Maybe Chris can answer that question.
So if the, if if we're going to change the rates that are being charged with the methodology, then uh, yes, we would need to be renoticing this hearing. Um, if the hauler was open to changing the nine months to 12 months or 10 months or whatnot, that would be something that would need to be negotiated with the hauler. Um, so if that answers your two questions, then.
Yes, that answers my question. Um, Lana's asking, this is for A G P. Uh, Lana is on Zoom and trying to speak. But uh, yeah, I mean, if I, I just want to make sure that the city council is aware that if we had to go through a 218 process again, that could take another two or three months, which then would mean an additional temporary increase.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification because, you know.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Did you have something else?
I was gonna say, for, for someone with a, with a 32 gallon bin, that temporary increase is less than $5 a month. So.
Okay.
Just to add some context.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and and stop questions for now, but thank you all for all that information.
Councilmember Edwards? Councilmember Barton? Councilmember Landrum?
Um, I just wanted to find out, just to make sure I understand correctly, the size of the 19 gallon one, is that, which ones are those?
So the 19 gallons are like the mini size.
Oh.
There's very, there's very small ones.
Yeah.
You have a 32 gallons, a little bit taller.
Yeah.
64 is a little bit wider. The 96 is the biggest one that we have. And that's typically your green waste and um your recycling containers, the 96 or the 64.
Right. And then um at the last, um, the last meeting we had on this, there was a public comment about the possibility of sharing um service like between neighbors. I'm wondering if that's a possibility or or I think, or someone said every other week. I mean, yeah, is there, is there, are there any probe programs or ability to do anything like that?
You want me to do it or?
I, thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I, I would be concerned about a potential public health issue. If folks were hoarding uh trash for an additional week, um, then there'd also be the issue of that, you know, that would take additional trips of the trucks because now we're putting more per household into the trucks. I'm not totally sure that that would realize that the cost savings that um it might seem at at first blush, but I would ask Jeff Clarence to chime in there. Is, is that something that's done anywhere?
No, because one of the things is for solid waste, it's supposed to be seven, once a week, that once every seven days it has to be picked up.
What about sharing?
The sharing is, the, well, the thing is with the mandatory property services, that's, it's the way that we kind of do rate manuals. So if people are sharing, you know, you're, you're, that, that cost is uh their vet, when we did redo the rate manual, uh, rate increases again, that will change the cost basis because we're assuming every house has a trash service, every account.
I, I would also add too that we'd have to change the municipal code. Currently, the municipal code requires that anyone with water service has trash service.
Thank you.
I just like to comment and then with a question, um, you know, I, I have a home with a actual cottage. And if I don't have a tenant, I have to still have trash and recycle. So that's mandatory for me even when I don't have a tenant. So that's just a comment. Um, I was wondering, um, have we ever, is there any other option within the county um that I'm personally not aware of? I'm just going to ask this. Is there any other option? Has that ever been exercised by anyone in this county?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. Yes, there is another hauler that provides service uh to my knowledge to City of Paso Robles as well as to Tascadero. Um, I believe that was kind of a smaller outfit that recently was purchased by another large corporate um trash hauler uh that's nationally known. Um, I, I would just point out that we are in an agreement with uh Waste Connections doing business as Morro Bay Garbage Service uh until the year 2040. That doesn't mean we couldn't exit that contract potentially. Um, but to answer your question, yes, we, we, there are other options in the county.
Um, are, are those rates comparable that you know, Mr. Pollock? Or maybe I should.
I do can share that.
Thank you.
So for example, uh, even with the 20% increase and the retro, which makes a 19 gallon to be about $21. Um, if you move to North County, you're looking at about $37 for that same thing. So uh, you know, even with a 20% increase plus your retro, you will get over 100% increase if it's moved to a different area, just for the 19 gallon. And I can go down the line for the 3264. So one of the things that we prided ourselves on was we always charged the, you know, low cost service. It just unfortunately pandemic, a lot of cost inflationary issues with the regulations just really raised the prices. And when you look at our rates, we're still one of the lower ones in the area here. So it's, it's in comparison. I understand it's the percentage is pretty high. But if you look at the dollar value for what it is charged compared to the North County or some even neighboring agencies in Monterey or Santa Barbara County, Morro Bay's uh definitely one of the lower ones.
I, I really appreciate that, that you um, you, your response. And um, I just had to ask.
No problem. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? At this time, I will declare the public hearing open regarding the consideration of proposed garbage rate increase. Uh, have there been any protests filed with the clerk? And are there enough protests for a majority protest of any of the fees in question?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to tonight's meeting, the clerk's office received 711 written protests. None of those protests have been validated. Even if all of them were valid, there are insufficient protests to count as a majority protest.
Thank you. With that, I will invite members of the public. I will remind you, there's a three minute public comment period. And if you would like to file a protest and have not, it must be in writing and submitted to the clerk prior to the close of this public hearing.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Terry Simons. And now for the main event. Sometimes I feel like I come to these meetings with only one thought in mind and I end up talking about everything. I was one of the speakers at the prior August hearing on this that suggested, knowing to my own ignorance, that we could perhaps pick up trash every other week. I was deluged with uh pushback from various entities and individuals telling me that it's state law and municipal code based on state law that trash must be picked up every week. Not being one to necessarily bend automatically to mere state law or local ordinance, um, I would suggest that there must be ways that we can help our garbage collector uh minimize or reduce their workload as, because that's what we're basically paying for. We're paying for a service. If, if the cost of providing that service is based on what the service requirements are, then really the only way that I think we can reduce the contract is to reduce the service that we're asking our provider to do. In my neighborhood, all the garbage cans are set out in front of the individual houses that they service. This is contrary to the United States Postal Service that requires that mailboxes only be on one side of the street or the other. And I'd love to take credit for that, but I can't because it's been going on for 50 years. And it suddenly occurred to me, why do we have garbage pickup on two sides of the street and require a redundancy of trips for the garbage company with their huge trucks and all their manpower? They drive on, on my particular block, they drive it four times because of the way the routing has to work in our neighborhood. It's not really the responsibility of the garbage company, I don't think, to sort that out, although I wish it was. But it is our responsibility as the consumer to tell the garbage company, we think you're being inefficient. We think your inefficiency is costing our rate payers money. And we would like to have some alternative suggestions as to what we can do on our side. My, the only suggestion I can come up with, other than going against state law and local ordinance, is that maybe we could suggest to our consumers that neighborhood by neighborhood, street by street, we agree that we're only going to put garbage cans on one side of the street. How hard can that be? Really, the post office requires it. Why can't we?
Now for a counter opinion?
I totally agree with you, Mr. Simons. Betty Winholtz, um, I would like to read a few comments. Um, the community has engaged their right to protest. Um, the negotiations the city has made with the Morro Bay Garbage Company owned by Waste Connections. Residents appreciate that the city did an evaluation as to the reasonableness of the rate increase, which brought the increase down. However, there are still a couple of items that are unfavorable to the rate payers. And some of them have been mentioned by council members. One, the nine month retroactive fee. The evaluation may have. One, the nine-month retroactive fee. The evaluation may have delayed the implementation of the requested fee. However, it was known to the company that this was a possibility. It's in the contract. Therefore, the ratepayer should not have to pay the eighteen point thirty-eight percent fee. Number two, as stated in the staff report, the CPI in this contract is for four years. It's usually for two years. Why was that increased? This should be kept at two years, again, giving the public a more timely say in two years rather than in four. Number three, it is stated in the city's municipal code that all properties are to pay for the garbage service, just like sewer and water, as was mentioned by Mr. Qualick a minute ago. Yet Prop two eighteen says, quote, "No fee or charge may be imposed for a service unless that service is actually used or immediately available to the owner of the property," unquote. Why this is important is while engaging the public in the two eighteen vote, I heard from several people who own property here but do not live here, that they don't have garbage service. So knowing that our town has twenty percent unoccupancy, that's a significant figure. And so is that somehow playing into our rates and that that should be evaluated? And I'm not saying that all twenty percent aren't paying their share, but to me, that's a significant number and that we need to relook at that and find those people that aren't supposed to, or in light of the statement that that two eighteen says you can't make us do it if we're not using it? Does that now influence our sewer and water bills for people who don't live here? I mean, there's a new curmudgeon that's coming uh come up. For alternative procedures for collecting trash and recyclables have uh not been engaged in the negotiations between the city and company. And I think several people have raised that tonight. And I think before, even if we're committed to this company till twenty forty, before the next uh two eighteen vote comes up in five years, it seems to me we need to come up with creative ways, as Mr. Simon said, to reduce the impact of how the garbage company is in our town, so they don't have to charge us so much, so we can have lower bills. And lies is the city applying its fr- okay, is the city applying its franchise fees, which I assume are to help with the repair of the roads because of the big trucks? Are we using that for road repair? Or is it just going into the general fund? Thank you. And the reason I think this is important is because it says in your alternatives that if you find that there is inaccurate or inflated information, and I think that whole twenty percent regarding our unoccupied houses might be a reason for you to look at that.
Good evening again, Paul Donnelly, Moray. Um, one of the things that um I'd like to recognize and somebody that goes unrecognized in this process each time is your city clerk. She tallies these votes. She's very good. And I want to thank her for her service. You're the best. Um, the process on this two eighteen, that's the thing that bothers me the most because it's not democratic. You're counting all the no votes. The only yes votes are gonna be the five of you up there. That's happened every time we had a two eighteen. The only yes votes counted are the city council. Doesn't seem fair. So my proposal is those that protested shouldn't have to pay, and those that kept their silence, pick up the tab. I've said this before. I know it's I know it's a laugh, but you know what? That's that would be fair. That's democracy. Getting back to the idea of going out every other week like Terry has mentioned and and I and despite the what the state says, you know, when we were talking earlier about the greenhouse gas emissions, just think of the uh reduction in in emissions from only service every other week, just from that. Um, that's something that, you know, maybe it could be considered. I don't know if it's gonna add up to a whole lot. Um, but nonetheless, all these things do add up. And the idea is to be efficient to keep the cost down to the ratepayers. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this hearing item? A G P? Nope, excuse me. Moving slow.
Eric four, Moro Bay. This is what I came down here to talk about, but um listening to everybody talk, including council. Um, you've all made excellent points. And um, it is a real shame uh we can't let um basic uh business practices uh help us out and look for another hauler. We what's happening to us is not in the interest of the general welfare. We are being asked to um ante up for general inflation that's happening everywhere. And to a large extent, um, it's being passed on down to us through our federal government, through our state government, and and now we're seeing it. This is uh this hauler is intending to pass it on to us uh through you. And we're kind of locked into this whole thing by, quote, regulations and so forth. But I like the idea that somebody is asking good questions about possible alternatives. That's absolutely what we need to do. When we can't afford, when I can't afford something, I use less of it. That's how I choose to fight inflation. I'm driving a lot less. And I'm generating a lot less garbage. Um, that's just a natural thing to do. And I believe our government should um help us do that. In other words, if he's saying, well, we're locked into nineteen gallons, well, let's talk about ten gallon tanks. I absolutely, I see these big trucks roaring up both sides of the street. And um, I've got about a fifth of my can full. And this happens week after week. And you know, we used to have a garbage guy actually running out, actually handling garbage. The guy just sits in the truck there and and um they've got the whole thing locked down to a science of how to pick up garbage. But what is not happening is adequate help to um the average customer to um encourage him to use less garbage, generate less garbage, and um and and the other thing is is fundamentally our government, all our government, should be helping us fight inflation. It should not just be passing it on to us. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor and mayor council. Sorry. I just want to thank the uh seven hundred people that put in their ballot against the rate increase. The last increase we had, I what was it, last year, I heard we got thirty-five votes or something random. I mean, to hear the number of seven hundred. And I want to thank the people that walk the streets to put pieces of paper on people's doorstep to educate them because this is a Prop two eighteen ballot. People do not understand how this works. They don't have to be registered to vote on a Prop two eighteen. They just have to pay the garbage bill or be the owner of the property. It's that simple. And nobody knows what an APN number is most of the time. They don't have it in their back pocket. So, you know, just putting your address down and so forth. Keep, and I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the people maybe watching from home, you know. Proposition two eighteen ballots and votes in this town, they're not over because they're gonna come before you again with water and sewer. More trash? You know, we got our signs ready. We're educated in this, the people that walk the streets and that have been talking to their neighbors about this. It's it's our only recourse, this proposition vote. So um anyway, thank you. Thank you for your your time tonight.
A G P, do we have anyone in the queue?
Madam Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. Uh, does council have questions based on the public comments?
I I have a question about the uh one of the speakers asked about, could we um create a smaller bin size? Have you thought about doing that? I would be a good candidate for that because I don't, I recycle a lot in compost.
So unfortunately, nineteen gallons is actually the smallest one that the companies make. And that's that's it's actually uh probably the shortest one that our arm can pick up on the nineteen gallon. So in those automated arms, they go so low uh with a ten gallon, I don't, they don't even make one. I I would assume it'd be I'd assume it it there's no, there's nothing less than a nineteen gallon. I mean, that's a five gallon bucket. It's two of those um be pretty tough to pick up. Or if somebody ever made it.
Okay, thank you. And what you're, this is a company that like it's a publicly owned company, am I understanding it?
No, the so most of the garbage carts are made by several manufacturers and thirty-two is typically one of the smaller ones. There's only a select few that actually do less than that, the nineteen gallons.
No, 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 I meant, I'm sorry, I didn't, wasn't clear. I meant you're the company.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, more big garbage. Uh, we actually are owned by a a national company called Waste Connections. But More Bay Garbage has been servicing this area for the last fifty years.
So there's there's like stockholders and things like that?
Yeah, so uh Waste Connection has bought More Bay Garbage back in two thousand and two. And Waste Connection is a publicly traded company. Um, yes, and they they are, they do have stockholders.
All right. Thank you.
Count, questions?
Um, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank the people who uh took their time to um turn in a uh ballot and um to also come to the meeting tonight. Um, I know that garbage is something that people love to hate. Um, and so it's um not surprising that we had a a fair number of ballots turned in. So thank you very much for your participation.
Councilmember Edwards? Councilmember Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to echo what Councilmember Barton said. Um, but I do have some questions. Um, one is regarding a question from um Betty Winholtz. Um, regard, it said, or she said that in this in the city applying its franchise fee to street repair as is the point of the, wait, hold on, I'm reading from her email. But basically, um, about the franchise fee and the street repair, and can the fee be lowered in order to lower costs to ratepayers?
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I can take that question. So to answer frankly, yes, of course, the city council can lower the fee. But I'd like to talk a little bit about what that franchise fee pays for. So that franchise fee comes in as a as a special revenue. Um, but then gets essentially transferred into the general fund and the money uh goes to anything that's related to trash service. So one of those things is is road repairs because the trash trucks definitely do damage um on our roads, particularly those uphill roads in Northmore Bay. We just toured Radcliffe neighborhood and you can see if you go there on a trash day, exactly where the trash cans are are basically like potholes. That said, there are other expenses that the city takes on besides uh road repairs that have to do with trash hauling. For example, Janine's time in reviewing contracts and and liaising with the I W M A as as well as Waste Connections, uh our assistant city attorney, who spent time negotiating um the restated agreement with the hauler that we did last year and these kinds of rate increases as well. So um all that, all of those impacts are considered when um um putting together that franchise fee, not just roads.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Director Pollock. I have one additional question. This is my own question. Um, in this new contract, and I don't, I apologize if I didn't, I just didn't see it. Is is there the ability to um put in the agreement that we limit the amount of increased rates annually? Like from this point on, now that we've played catch-up after COVID and all of that, is there is there a way to to do that? Or is it too late?
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I I think I understand your questions. So we have this contract until twenty forty. Are we gonna see more of these? Is is that is that the question?
Yeah, like, is there a way to put a like a percentage cap?
Yeah, so because we have to follow the state's Prop two eighteen process, which was, you know, a voter-approved measure. The the trash company is is entitled to request an increase and then um a total of five years of of increases per Prop two eighteen. Uh, at the conclusion of of that, they they can, they can come back and and do it again. Now, of course, if it's successfully protested or if the city council votes against the increase, then that that would kind of stop those increases. Um, but under those scenarios, still, uh, if if the hauler lost an increase, they could come back the next month with another request. So I'm not aware of any contractual way to limit um the hauler's ability to exercise their rights under Prop two eighteen, but perhaps if Lana Lehman, I believe, is now connected, Lana, if you could raise your hand in Zoom um and answer this question.
Yes, hear me?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Um, so uh under, that is correct, that under Prop two eighteen, the um the hauler is um uh entitled to recover the cost of providing their services. Hence, the uh uh the rate study that was done to verify precisely that issue. Are we covering the uh cost of providing service? Uh, Prop two eighteen, specifically Government Code Section five-three-seven-five-six, also specifically allows automatic inflationary adjustments over the course of five years. Uh, I think this also addresses uh one of the public speaker's comments with regard to why are we moving from a two-year um uh inflationary schedule to a five-year inflationary schedule? Ultimately, it um saves the city um money and it quite likely also keeps rates lower to apply uh the inflationary adjustments over the course of five years, rather than allowing um the opening of the negotiation door every two years and allowing this process to happen and sort of restart every two years and allowing the uh the the rates to be readjusted every two years. Um, in terms of inflation, it it they are entitled to recover inflation as it goes up or down. So it's not like they their inflationary cap is at whatever high inflation rates may currently be in place. If inflation goes down, the rates, the the rate adjustment for that year of lower inflation will also go down. Uh, we we do not, there is not a hard cap on the inflationary adjustments.
Thank you so much. That really clarified a lot of things for me. Um, my last thing is I just want to make a comment. I want to thank um whoever made it possible to put the Spanish translation announcement at the top, at the front page of the informational um section on what the uh protest ballot, you know, the instructions. I just appreciate the fact that I know that we had requested Spanish translation in the original meeting. It was unanimous that we had asked for that. I understand that it was very expensive to translate the entire, like, I think it was seven pages. So I do appreciate the fact that there at the top, the first thing I saw was the ability to 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 read it in Spanish if you went to a website. So I just wanted to say thank you for making that um possible. So thank you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sure. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Qualick if that has ever been considered, that we um have the trash all picked up on one side? That makes a lot of sense. I mean, logistically, it might be tricky, but it makes a lot of sense as far as the greenhouse gas emissions and the the wear and tear on the road and things like that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I'll be honest, that wasn't considered on our side. I my knee-jerk reaction, perhaps it's incorrect, is that the folks living on that side of the street may not take to it too well. But I would ask Jeff Claren to come up and answer whether there's any precedent for the hauler doing that in other communities and whether there's been an impact or to come up and answer whether there's any precedent for the hauler doing that in other communities and whether there's been an impact or a reduction in costs as a result.
You know, that's actually a great idea. I actually really like that idea. Our guy, our drivers would love that idea. You know, because we could just do it all on one side of the street. We don't have to keep going back on the same, um, road again. So if we go on one street and stay one side, make a right and go on the same street and stand one side again, it would, it would, uh, speed up collections. And it would be eventually cheaper, um, you know, so this is something that would have to be looked at, of course. When you do collections, it's, it's sometimes it's, you have to look at an overall historical, you know, and that definitely would, you know, curb rate increases in the future if that's something that was done.
I, I may just add that it's possible that if the, the city and the hauler were to work together on implementing this solution and there is a reduction in cost, the city could come back to the hauler without going through a full Prop two eighteen process and Lana will kick in if I'm not telling the truth here, uh, and ask for a rate reduction based on reduction in cost. Lana, is that correct that we could come back if we implemented some, uh, significant cost-saving solution?
If there's a, if there is a reduction in rates below the maximum rates set by this schedule, then you do not have to redo the Proposition two eighteen process again. Um, and in fact, there's a, there've actually been a lot of questions about how do the rates keep it, keep with the times, so to speak, in terms of fluctuating markets, in terms of the recycling market, for example, uh, going up or down. Uh, so the terms of the contract answer some of those questions, I believe. Under the contract, at a minimum, the city and the hauler will meet at least once a year to discuss potential rate adjustments, increases or decreases, and the justifications for, uh, those changes. And I do want to note that the contract also provides that the, that the hauler guarantees that upon, um, the start of their services on, under this contract, that the rates will be competitive with the rates charged for similar services in the local area. Uh, furthermore, the city has the right to conduct or retain a rate consultant, um, once every three years to review the, the rate schedule and substantive compliance with, uh, the cost of services, uh, limitations and other requirements of Prop two eighteen. Of course, as part of, uh, those regular, uh, rate negotiations set forth in the contract, a function of those negotiations would be verifying that the rates reflect the actual cost of providing the service. So for example, if such cost decrease, uh, it's if the hauler's costs decrease materially, that would be a very key point of, uh, negotiating rates down.
Thank you. Thank you.
One comment on that one, though, residential is just part of the, uh, picture there. There's also a commercial side of things with collected dumpsters, the big dumpsters. So putting carts on just one side of the street, you know, it's only probably, um, a half of the rate.
What, you mean, half of the?
So, uh, for example, said more, more big garbage collects both commercial and residential commercials. You know, commercial have the big dumpster, so they, they won't be able to move. It's just the residential side of things, so.
So it would possibly be really beneficial to residential.
Residential, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. And if you think your residential rates are going up, you should see what it's doing to our commercial rates in this town. It's painful, painful. Is that something then that you, you, I, I would see that as a reduction in wear and tear on our streets too. So I see a double benefit if there's an opportunity for a rate reduction plus, plus wear and tear. My neighbor across the street from me has been bringing his garbage across for the last several years since he got his driveway redone, so they don't pull across his driveway. So, um, I mean, it just makes, makes sense if that's something that would be an opportunity we could look at.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum and, and the mayor for commenting on that. I, you know, just before we go too, too rosy on it, again, it, 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 there's winners and losers in that scenario. And so that's something that staff could evaluate in the future and, uh, come back to council on if that's desired as a future agenda item.
Maybe it'd be one year on this side, one year on that side. Um, there was a comment made by, uh, one of the speakers and I just would like some clarification when they, um, and thank you for walking, um, for the two eighteen votes. That some of the, um, property owners didn't have garbage service. How could they not have garbage service?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. The only way I understand someone wouldn't have garbage service is if they don't have water service. So in other words, if there's no one living there.
That was what I thought. So, um, yeah, a little confused from that. Thank you for, uh, the information, Miss Burnin' Game, Mr. Qualick. And with that, I am going to go to Madam Clerk. And if you've received any additional written protests during the public hearing, please include those protests in the tally and report a final tally.
Thank you, Mayor. I've received twelve additional protests since the last tally for a total of seven hundred and twenty-three written protests, um, which is not a, which does not count as a majority.
Thank you for that. There are still insufficient protests with respect to the fees or any of them to count as a majority protest of the parcels subject to fees. I'm reading my script. Thank you. With that, I will return the matter to council for discussion by the council before making a motion regarding the adoption of Resolution number sixty-eight twenty-three. Any more comments, questions?
I, I, I would just say that it's a, uh, a pretty big message to the amount of signatures that were gathered, just really on a very grassroots level for, it wasn't an easy process, the way it came to, um, rate pairs, the, 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 um, you know, the protest, but, um, to, to think that there were that many, um, residents that have, have taken the time to turn those in. I think that's, that should speak volumes. I would love for our trash hauler, if you guys, you know, are, if there's other ways that you see, uh, you know, and within the industry, if there's ways that we as a community can save you costs besides alter, you know, what we just discussed about the trash cans being on one side. There's anything else that you have, you know, come across, um, that you're like, hey, this would be a simple way to reduce rates in your city? I would love for that to be communicated to our staff, um, or communicated to us at some point so that we can maybe work on getting that messaging out to our communities so that we can do our best as a city to inform our citizens on how they can contribute to that rate decrease. So just wanted to put that out there, but, um, yeah.
Thank you. I echo that. Anyone else? With that, I'm looking for a motion. Silence. Go ahead.
Okay, well, okay, so we're not going to read the whole thing, but it looks like maybe four and five make the, make, would make.
Microphone?
Yeah, it's on.
Uh, clarification, do we need the whole thing read, Mr. Newmeyer?
No.
Thank you.
So I can just go to four and five?
Uh, if you're inclined, you would, uh, just make a motion to adopt Resolution sixty-eight twenty-three. Uh, and then if that passes, then, uh, staff is suggesting that city manager be authorized to, uh, execute a contract amendment.
Okay. Okay, um, so provided there is no majority protest against the proposed rate increase, adopt Resolution number sixty-eight twenty-three. And assuming there's no majority protest and the proposed rate adjustment is approved, then authorize city manager to execute an amendment to the city's franchise agreement with More Bay Garbage Service, Inc. to replace the maximum rate schedule in the agreement with the newly adopted rate structure.
Thank you. I'm a second.
I second.
I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wicksum?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh. Yes, yes, please.
We have one more public hearing item and we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're back. Thank you for indulging us at short break. Um, with that, we are going to move on to item B two. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number six, six, one, amending title seventeen, the More Bay Municipal Code to add a chapter seventeen thirty-one establishing objective design standards. And with that, I will turn it over to community development, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wicksum. Um, just give me a second here and we'll get the presentation up. All right, um, as you noted, uh, writing a presentation related to the development of our objective design standards ordinance. Um, I'm going to cover, uh, sort of the purpose and some of the background, uh, behind the development of the ordinance. Discuss applicability of the development of objective design standards, um, kind of talk a little bit about what they are. Discuss some alternatives and then, uh, provide the final recommendation. So, um, we developed objective design standards because there's been, um, changes in, in state law related to the streamlining of, uh, affordable and just housing projects in general, and then affordable housing proj- projects as well. And, um, in those processes and those, or in those, um, state legislation typically require a, uh, streamlined review process and only allow the, uh, application of objective design standards versus what you might normally find in a review process that goes to, say, the planning commissioner, city council, where there's a lot of, um, in many instances, um, subjective standards applied. Typically, these, uh, pieces of legislation apply to cities that have not met their, uh, housing targets that are identified in the city's arena numbers or regional housing needs allocation. Um, that's the case for the city. Uh, we have not met our regional housing needs, uh, assessment, our allocation goals. Um, I think we have about half of the overall housing units for this last cycle. We have three hundred and ninety-one units we're supposed to produce, um, but we're short on the affordable side of the units. And we've gotten about a little over half of them, I think, right now. I think we have about a hundred and ninety-one units since the beginning of the cycle, which is in twenty twenty. You can't apply. So when you have, uh, projects that come in and are being processed under the new housing legislation, um, you can't, uh, apply subjective standards. Um, and you can only, again, as I was saying, provide objective standards. Many of these state laws, uh, are, are assembly bills are in place. Uh, and they just simply limit the city's ability to apply design regulations. Like most of our design regulations are relatively subjective, and so they're not very specific about what you have to do when you're trying to address blank walls and things like that. So, um, wouldn't be able to apply like our general residential design standards. I'll talk more about that in a minute. We're not, and you'll hear me say this again, required to adopt objective design standards. They're simply a tool. If we don't adopt them, though, we won't have the ability when projects come in or if they come in and are processed under the housing legis, pieces of housing legislations that are out there now are forthcoming. Uh, we won't have the ability to direct, um, any design changes to a building that would come underneath those. So that's why it's important for us to do this. Um, some of the background, so a lot of the housing legislation is based on the Housing Accountability Act, uh, which simply requires, um, cities to approve housing, um, uh, based on the housing that's identified in our general plan and our housing element. Um, that's related to densities that we allow in our different districts and, and those types of things. Objective design standards don't, um, relate specifically to growth or increased density in any areas. This is really just a tool to, to direct what design of projects might look like. Uh, we have, uh, the city's housing element was adopted in twenty twenty. It's, uh, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-eight housing element. Um, and in that we have, um, implementation item, uh, our action item H dash one point, one point, one, three. And it says the city will continue to require affordable housing developments to be designed consistent with surrounding neighborhood in order to enhance the sense of belonging to the community. Forms, materials and proportions should be utilized that are compatible with the character of the surroundings. And then it says, design standards will be objective. So our housing element anticipated us doing this and, uh, we've got, um, authorization a couple of years ago from city council to pursue grants, um, to, uh, pay for this, uh, process and to implement this implementation item or which is development of objective design standard. Uh, there are multiple pieces of legislation, um, you know, that are applicable to the city. Um, you have SB three thirty that's, uh, related to affordable housing projects in residential areas. You have AB two eleven and SB six, um, which, uh, relate to mixed use, uh, allowing affordable projects and residential projects on mixed use and commercial districts. And then, um, you know, you would use objective design standards in relation to any of the new housing legislation that's pending. One of the probably more salient ones or important ones that's sitting on the governor's desk right now is SB four twenty-three. Um, that's going to, uh, push SB thirty-five into the coastal zone of California. Uh, SB thirty-five was adopted several years ago and has sunset clauses in it and things like that and didn't apply in the coastal zone. But SB four twenty-three, um, will apply in the coastal zone and it's, I think everybody anticipates the governor will sign it and it'll take effect on January one. Um, so again, important that we potentially put these, um, objective design standards in play so that we have some say in what projects look like if they might come in under those pieces of legislation. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about the objective design standards themselves, um, subjective standards. Uh, it looked like things that may include personal preferences and interpretations. Uh, they may result in uncertain outcomes. They may result in, uh, longer review timelines and costs. And that last bullet point is a fairly salient one in that that's the reason that all of this legislation is coming down from the state. The, the, the state views, you know, the cities is having problems, um, you know, approving housing projects. There's a not in my backyard problem, at least from the standpoint of the state, and so they're making housing by right. And so it's, and they're putting it in every district and every zone, anywhere they can put it. And a, a, a lot of the, uh, the legislation is somewhat formulaic. Um, I mean, thankfully they do allow us though, through all of those, uh, the, all of those pieces of legislation do allow us to apply objective design standards so far. Objective, um, standards look more like, uh, they don't involve personal judgments, uh, by a public official or decision maker. They provide clear and measurable design requirements. They're basically black and white. Uh, what objective standards can and cannot do, they can establish measurable or otherwise unambiguous standards for building design, um, kind of like our setbacks are. You have a five-foot side setback or ten-foot front setback or something along those lines. Um, what they cannot do is create new capacity for homes, meaning add density. They can't add height to a project. Um, and they don't remove the public notification requirement. I think that's important, right? Because, uh, especially since we're in the coastal zone of California, um, projects coming underneath any number, uh, of the pieces of legislation that are out there to facilitate housing are still required to obtain coastal development permits. We're still required to notice. You just can't have a public hearing on it. Okay, so, um, some example of the, our, our current guidelines that is at the bottom of the slide there. It says residences should be designed with relief in building facades. Long unarticulated roof plans should be avoided, and this comes from the city's residential design guidelines. There's no spec- specificity in that. It just tells you what we're looking for, but doesn't tell you how to get there. If you had an objective standard, it would look more like this. And it's, uh, it says roof lines shall not extend more than a length of forty feet without a prominent variation in roof form such as hip, gable, shed or flat with the roof with a parapet or a variation of the roof height of at least eighteen inches as measured from the highest point of each roof line. Again, objective standards from the, from the proposed code. And so there's a kind of a big difference between those because the one on the button, bottom doesn't tell you how to achieve those things and that's why it's subjective. Process that we went through, the planning commission spent a, a, a good amount of time reviewing this. We had four public hearings on this. They were continued over time. And they were continued because the planning commission was interested in putting guidelines inside of the ordinance that reflected, you know, the character of More Bay. And it took them a while to do that and, um, they didn't always agree on everything. But in the end, they did end up making a recommendation to city council, um, on a four-one vote, uh, that was on Aug- uh, August fifteenth. And that recommendation is to approve the ordinance that's in front of you this evening. Um, as far as, uh, um, alternatives to objective standards, the city again is not required to adopt them. But, uh, if we don't, then we don't have that tool in our, in our, in our toolbox to, to direct design of projects that might come under, come in underneath the various pieces of legislation that, um, allow for the applicability of the, of objective design standards. Our current, like you see, the picture on the right there is a picture of the city's residential design guidelines. Most of the, uh, policies, uh, or most of the policies and guidance in that document are subjective. They're more like that one that was at the bottom of the other slide that kind of gives suggestions about things that we might want to see, but don't give you specificity on how you get there. Um, and then even the new zoning code that we're working on, that'll be coming, um, forward to you in, in the next couple of meetings. Uh, where we've done updates to it. We do have design, um, standards, um, that are built into it. That follow the, the development standards tables in those, and most of those things are also subjective. So I mean, this is really necessary, really just to address. The housing legislation that's out there. That's all that applies to. This doesn't apply to our regular projects. This, this chapter would only apply to a project. That was submitted under one of the pieces of legislation that's out there to facilitate housing. Any other project that would come in would go through the normal review process that would likely for a multifamily housing project or a. Or a mixed use project would require a planning commission. And in some instances, depending on the size, city council review. So. This doesn't do anything related to that, our normal, you know, application process. And we probably won't see very many applications. That come in underneath the different pieces of housing legislation that would require objective design standards. But again, if we had one, we'd certainly want to have something in our toolbox. That allows us to provide some direction related to design. Think I already covered the stuff on that slide. So that's the recommendation that, that we're making is for. To introduce for first reading by title only with further reading, we, reading waived ordinance six, six, one. In ordinance of the city council, the city of Morro Bay, California for adoption of objective design standards. For inclusion is chapter seventeen thirty-one of the Morro Bay Municipal Code. Residential and mixed use objective design standards and further to be amended, amended twenty twenty-two zoning code with a finding that no. Further environmental review is required per cent pursuant to state sequel guideline section one, five, one, six, two. That is my presentation and I have a project manager on this. Nancy Hubbard, our contract planner. I have our consultants with us from our end design group. Kimmy Nguyen and Randy Russel behind us to answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I will end. My presentation. Take questions.
Thank you, Scott and Nancy. Appreciate that. Questions for staff. Started, am I right? Council member Landrum?
First, I would like to ask, you gave us the. The Rena numbers and our requirements. How many affordable ones are we short? You, you, I, I think you told us there were one ninety, one ninety-eight. What, what was it that we need? But of those. Which, which, how many of those are affordable?
I, I don't have the, the numbers in front of me.
Do you know like roughly, like what percentage of those numbers are? I mean, you, you indicated, I asked you earlier and you indicated that. The majority of those were for affordable.
In my response to you, I said sixty-six percent of the total units created are above moderate income. And so the requirement is not that. It's to have very low income and low income and moderate income. And we're not meeting that. And I didn't bring that table with me.
Okay, so but really, we don't really need. Market rate housing in Morro Bay. We're at our level there. We need the affordable, but very low, the, the different criteria there. Okay. And I don't know, it, the rest, the rest of the council didn't get all that information. I think it might be helpful to, to know. You know, what those numbers, you know, what, what those different criteria. Or to be reminded, they might already know, but the different criteria, you know, extremely low. Low income, lower income and affordable. I asked that question. Could you, I mean, could you?
Well, if you're asking for the percentages, I mean, I don't know that this, did any of those, I mean, I'm happy to provide it, but it doesn't really have much to do with the objective design standards. But the affordability requirements that are in our codes, when you're dealing with extremely low, it's fifteen to thirty percent of area median income. Very low income is thirty to fifty percent of area median income. Lower income is fifty to eighty percent of area median income. Moderate income is eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Those are the levels.
And the area median income is eighty thousand. Correct?
It's, it's approximately. I think it's eighty, it's, that's some change, yes.
Okay, and. That's all for now.
Council member Barton.
I'm just curious if the way that this is structured, is this going to somehow cut into the number of. Affordable housing units that we're, we're building?
It, it's not designed to do that.
Okay.
It's designed specifically. So what happens is the different pieces of legislation that are out there. Will identify if you want to process an application underneath them. They'll tell you how much affordable units you have to. You have to provide in order to get that streamlined review process. They'll also, you know, there's a number of other statements. You probably might have to pay prevailing wage for the construction and that should be monitored. And there's. Any number of other requirements that go along with it, depending on. You know, where the project's located, what the zoning is and those types of things. All the objective design standards do is tell you like what it's supposed to look like. From a moral base standpoint. So it doesn't really affect the number of units. It really just says, hey, we don't want long uninterrupted, uninterrupted wall planes. And so you have to provide a breakup in that every so many feet. You have to have landscaping. You have to have landscaping in your parking lots. We don't want to have. We have those landscaping requirements to talk about like shielding parking areas away from like. The front doors and windows of the residential units because there's a quality of life issues. I mean, there's things like that that are in here. That really just say how you lay the, 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 the project out, where landscaping goes, those types of things are in there. How you offset and change the heights of roofs. So we don't get just a flat roof maybe. Or just a like rectangular box with no articulation. It kind of deals with those types of things.
Okay, so the. It would be, it would be possible then for someone planning a project to. That they were thinking was going to be a fairly simple project, that maybe it turns into a more complicated project and thereby becomes a more expensive project. Is that?
I don't think it becomes more expensive, but I think because the, the details are all in this document. If they have a designer that is paying attention to this document, then they're going to submit and maybe get. Approved the first time, maybe not, maybe it'll have to go another round or two, but they'll save money in, in saving time.
Okay.
It gives assurance, the, the concept is to give some certainty and assurance to the person making the application.
Okay.
So that is not a mystery how it's going to turn out. It's more, these are the rules, follow the rules and you'll have a project.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Thank you.
Council member Edwards.
I, I just want to say to Mr. Graham and staff, this is one of the most user friendly, easy to follow. PowerPoints I've seen, so I really appreciate it. Oh, sorry.
You can thank those sitting behind me.
Thank you so much. I couldn't see you. So I wanted to say that. Who, I guess my first question would be, and this is just informational, who conducts the ministerial review of projects? Once an ODS is in place, who, who, who does that?
Per the ordinance, it can be the planning commission and it can be staff. That was part of the, the discussion that we had. We had significant discussion on the planning commission level because there was concern. I think from the public standpoint that we weren't going to be having public hearings and public meetings. We're still not having public hearings and public meetings on these. Staff would be putting together a report that shows compliance or lack thereof. And then we would be getting concurrence where we did take it to planning commission. That the project does meet the objective design standards. Effectively, we'll end up having a checklist that we go over. And we'll probably just have the planning commission concur with that. There won't be, other than the normal public comment that you would have in the front end of a meeting. You're not going to have a public comment item for this because that's. Too similar to a public hearing that you can't have on the project.
Okay.
But the, but the legislation does allow, most of the, I think all of it does, allow for the planning commission to conduct that review. It does sound kind of weird because they conduct public hearings, but it does allow them to do that.
Okay. My next question, and this may seem obvious, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What is the risk to not having the ODS in place?
Somebody comes in with a project that qualifies under one of the pieces of legislation. And the only design standards we're going to have are going to be setbacks in height for the most part. And then they'll be able to have it look like whatever they want. I'm sure most of you have witnessed a planning commission meeting, and I think a lot of the discussion at those planning commission meetings is related to. How it fits into the space, how it fits into the neighborhood, what it looks like. Is it articulated, what the colors are? I mean, it's all those types of things. And these objective design standards, while not getting into color. Necessarily do those types of things. They give the, give the, the, the design a certain feel. And then again, the attempt by the planning commission over the four meetings that they reviewed this was to give standards that helped it, you know, help. Projects to fit into Morro Bay. And that was the, that was the idea behind it from the planning commission's point of view, anyway.
So, I mean, in your opinion, Mr. Graham, would you say that this is a safeguard, somewhat of a safeguard, I guess? And gives us some local control?
We, we, we need these. Yes. I mean, that's, I would say, I unequivocally say that we need these. Not having them gives us no control over what something looks like, which is, I don't think, a better solution than, than what we're proposing to you this evening.
Thank you.
Council member Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to save my comments. I just have a question. We, we got a lot, we got a bit of an input from our community regarding the twelve foot height first floor. You know, that, that height, can you explain? Can you just further explain why it's twelve feet and what, what the purpose is for that height?
Yeah, the planning commission discussed that at length and it's, and it's twelve feet floor to floor. Okay, so if you have a multi-story building, you're going to have anywhere between two and three feet between floors, depending on the amount of. Infrastructure you have between the two floors. And so what you end up there with is either a nine and a half foot. Or ten foot ceiling in the lower, in the, on the, on the lower floor, which is, I think, in keeping with the majority of our commercial spaces in town. The planning commission again gave significant thought to that. And that's why, and they put that standard in there. We had one that was taller. On the bottom floor. I think originally, I think we started off with like something like sixteen feet or something. Was that, was that right? And that's sixteen feet was just like, I think, class A retail like height. And the planning commission didn't like that. And wanted it to be more moral based scaled. And so came up with the, the shorter room height.
Okay, thank you. That, that does help. Let's see, I have one more question regarding. Just, just. For the heck of it, can you explain what the process if, you know, let's say a developer has a project. It meets all the design guidelines and it's approved, it's permitted and. And during construction, things aren't exactly to the guidelines during the process. Can you explain to me like how that's monitored? What, what happens if, if a project isn't. Completed within the guidelines or, you know, maybe the middle of the project, you discover it's not exactly within the guidelines. Like, how does that play out?
That's a, that's a good question, Council member Ford. So we, we have, all projects are conditioned to include a, a requirement in them. That, that recognize that changes are made to projects. And they allow for minor modifications to be approved at the staff level and major modifications are required to go back to planning commission. And or city council, because some projects do go to city council. So it would be either one of those. And so if there was a change made, for whatever reason, you know, there was a, just a desire to change something like sometimes. You, you, you get plans that are at the planning commission level and you don't have structural designs yet, right? And so you. You, they, you come up with an architectural rendering of it. They do the layouts. They kind of show these were windows and then they do the structure and they're like, we can't put a window here. And so we want to move the window. That's a minor change and that would be something that staff would, would typically approve. Planning commission, at the last planning commission meeting, we had a, over on Alder, we had a. A, a hotel that went before them and it had a sawtooth roof. The planning commission wanted to make sure that that sawtooth roof stayed with the project and they provided a comment that. That is something we wouldn't want to see changed. Well, anytime, you know, a planning commissioner city council weighs in on an aspect of a project. And somebody wants to change that aspect of a project, we would always consider that major because that's something that was, that the. Planning commissioner city council gave specific direction and that would be something that comes back to the review authority, whether it be planning commissioner city council.
I appreciate you walking us through that.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. That's it for questions for me. Thanks.
Um, I. Okay, so a lot of these, well, first of all, one of my questions is, where are these allowed? Like anywhere in town?
It's so would be wherever, so I, I think I give you the one example that, of the legislation, which is. So AB two, zero, one, one and maybe six or something like that. Anyway. Those apply to commercial properties. And so they say, hey, you have a piece of commercial property, you can actually. Build a residential project on it.
Okay.
So it, it applies all over town. It applies to our residential zones that allow for multifamily. It applies to our commercial areas. Because in instances like that, you can build a residential project there under certain circumstances. It applies to areas where we allow mixed use. So it, it applies to most areas in town.
Okay, so in, is there any criteria that we could have in our zoning that would prevent these sorts of things in a certain? Part of town?
So the, the. You're just talking about projects and those projects would be coming to us under the guises of some. Piece of legislation that's out there that says we have to allow them. We don't have a choice. The objective design standards, if we didn't have them, they would come in and we'd be required to process them ministerially. In the location where they're proposed, assuming they're consistent with the legislation. If they're consistent with the legislation, the expectation is the city is going to approve it. We don't approve it. You run into issues where we could be sued. But there's actually, they've turned HCD and they have an enforcement arm now. That's the California Department of Housing and Community Development. If you're not following the housing legislature, legislation, a developer can go to them and say, hey, city of Morro Bay is not following the requirements. And then they can come after us. So the idea that we would have something in here that says you can't do what the legislation says is not a good idea.
Well, I'm just thinking about Morro Bay and it's pretty built out, the town of Morro Bay. So I think I read in there that. It can't be, it can't be any, you can't tear down a house to build anything like this. So all you could tear down, I'm assuming is. A commercial building? You can't, you can't tear down a residential building?
I mean, that's just, that, that would just be a piece of one piece of legislation. There are multiple pieces of legislation that potentially could apply. So it's hard to answer the question.
Oh, so that was just one of those bills? Okay. Okay, and then. The one thing that they are limited to is what our zoning code is, I guess, far as height and setback and things like that.
Correct.
Which we haven't finalized.
Well, you, we have, we have setback requirements in our zoning code. We have the current one. We have height limitations.
For our new one, that that hasn't been completed.
Yes, the new zoning code is not. Portions of it are not yet in place. And that is coming back to you, coming up here in the next couple of meetings. You'll be seeing the. We have the recommendation from your planning commission that's coming to city council for those changes.
Okay, and then I asked you about. So there's these requirements to meet these certain, you know, you have to use certain. Colors and windows here and there. What if the building's built and then you, what if the building is built? Then there's no, there's no guarantee that it's going to stay that way. So it seems like a bunch of work to, for nothing.
So any project that comes through this is no different than any other project that gets approved in the city. We approve it. There are plans that go with it. They're approved to look a certain way. You can't deviate from the way that looks and you can't change it without coming to us to either get a minor or major modification. That's the way that it works. If you make changes to it without city authorization, then we have the ability to go after them to make them put it back. That's the way our projects are conditioned. And that's what would happen if somebody made changes to it without, say, permits and those types of things. We would seek recourse.
So if someone changed, painted the building all one color, then we would, say, say the building sold. From the, the original person that built it by right. And then they paint some, the new person painted it all one color. Then we could tell them they had to repaint it.
We do, we, so we approve the material and color boards, the plans, the whole package gets approved. And now, in those, in the color boards, those are stamped, they're signed, the plans are stamped and signed. And the expectation is that they're holding to those, those types of things. If they make changes to it, they have to talk to us.
And then the new buyer would have to be held to that.
Our, all of our approvals run with the land.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as far as the maintenance of the site?
We, we have maintenance requirements in the city's municipal code. Our code enforcement folks deal with that regularly. And so you're required to maintain your property to a certain level anyway. I mean, you can't have garbage and trash and broken windows and those types of things.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll reserve my questions till after public comment. This is a public, public hearing item and with that I will open public comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I wanted to echo Director Scott's comments about the robust hearings. At the planning commission, as I sat through all of those and commented profusely on all of those, I can say without a doubt. That they were fairly exhaustive. that they were fairly exhaustive, if not exhausting. I would like to take the opportunity to thank our consultants from RR&amp;M. They probably have as much, if not more, experience than any professional entity in this county at doing multiple projects around the state and the nation. I thought that their input was well-considered and well-detailed and educational to the commission as a whole. So yes, it's a complicated issue. It's not being driven by anybody here, certainly not by anybody in the development community, which I typically represent. But the state of California, in trying to meet their goals to create more housing, has decided that it's city jurisdictions and development restrictions that are causing the problem. Many of us in the development community don't agree with that idea. Morro Bay, I think, is probably going to be okay, mainly because land costs, with or without buildings, are so expensive here that they don't really lend themselves to the kinds of projects that I think that the state legislation is designed to promote. However, without the guidelines in place, there are projects that have been hovering around. There are sites that are yet to be developed. There are buildings that can be torn down and rehabilitated or whatever, because their underlying zoning allows for significantly more density than they may currently be using. And should particularly an out-of-town developer with the energy and the force of will decide to push a particular right to build his project, his or her project in our community, and we did not have these guidelines in place, I think that we would be fighting an uphill battle and perhaps jeopardizing our own right to govern our development, because as Director Graham points out, there is now this new enforcement arm of the housing authority, and they do have the right under law to revoke our ability to have a planning and development department, should we not meet our guidelines in terms of producing housing and/or we get penalized for not following the objective standards. So I would encourage you, as much as I dislike this, to approve these guidelines with the one caveat that they don't become the standard for everything in the community, that we retain the ability to have the traditional guidelines. Thank you.
Betty Winholz, and I would say amen to that last statement, that these should not be broadly interpreted, but only for those projects that have to be under these guidelines. Just a few comments. Yes, there were four hearings at the planning commission. The first one wasn't really a hearing. It was just informative, so there were actually three real discussions that happened. And I think it was interesting to note that, yes, the public will be noticed, but it doesn't matter. We'll hear about it, but we can't have it any effect. So I think you need to be aware of that, that what you passed tonight is critical, because there will be no input. We can hear about it, but we can't say anything. And I think it's also interesting to note that probably no city or very few cities have ever met their allocations, so we are not unique in that situation. I've I've identified four page numbers for you that I think I would like for you to change, if you would consider that in your discussion tonight. The one is on page 11, and that it talks about candor levering, which means to hang over, and that it talks about the setback, you know, the the wedding cake type of idea. But if you allow that, those balconies to hang over, you've lost your point of setting things back and making it less intrusive into the pedestrian view of things. So I would ask you to get rid of that, that those candle levers are allowed. On page 12, it talks about a flat roofs with a parapet, which is a vertical thing around your roof. I live a neighborhood. My very house has a flat roof. I can't get to my gutters to clean them out if you make me put that in there. Not me, but if a new house had to do that. I don't think we need the parapets, because as I've noted later on page 17, the idea of those parapets was to block anything on the roof that was undesirable to look at, but we already have that in our zoning ordinance, that those items will be blocked. So I think you can take out just those two words with parapet on page 12. On page 15, it's really about affordability, but again, these laws aren't about affordability. This is just about providing housing regarding of what kind of size. So that's my comment about about the windows. And I appreciate the the comment about the heights. Put that together with the fact that you are requiring, if you pass this the way it is, that you have to step up two feet, is that right, to get into a business, and then another 12 feet or whatever? So I think what I'm asking is, in that final paragraph, that I think we need some simulations. If this was a real project before the planning commission or the city council, we would ask for 3D or photo simulations. We haven't been given this. This is a thing that affects the whole community. I, there's no deadline here that you have to have this passed by a certain date. So I would encourage you to not pass this tonight, but ask staff to come back with some simulation, so we can actually see the consequences of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak again, and let's see, this is really why I came tonight. Although I wanted to talk about green energy. That's one of my favorite topics I love to hate. But I just wanted to say, I I understand, this this was a very good presentation, Scott. And I understand that we're kind of being twisted to approve this. So I'm not going to say don't approve it, because there's ramifications, you know, our crazy state government that we have. But there's two things that, you know, that I heard. One was the height limit. Let's get that in place. Let's keep, let's don't, you know, Pismo Beach used to be such a beautiful town. Now you go down there, and there's, you know, right, right next to the wharf, they put this huge condo building, and I don't want Morro Bay to start looking like Pismo Beach has become. So let's try to keep these, the size of these buildings down. And I don't know about the number. The other thing is, I'm concerned about the city council review. So it sounds like, you know, really, it's it's a plug and chug. They're going to come in, they're going to say, I meet the standards. The, you know, the development agency is going to look at that and confirm they meet the standards, and then you don't even hear about it. I don't hear about it. You know, so it's, it's a developer world after that. So if there's any way we can, for now, keep the city council review in there, betting that maybe Governor will do something right for a change and not, and not pass that part of the legislation you you referred to, and we can try to keep our city council review in the, in our standards. I think it sounds like a good idea to have these standards. I I agree with that. But can we try to keep the city council review in there, at least until we're strong-armed out of it? You know, and once, if it passes, then we got, we just come back, we make a minor amendment to this thing and and take that back out. That's that's my comment.
Thank you. AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Hi, Madam Chair. We have nobody on Zoom right now.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back and excuse me to council for more questions of staff or comments. And I will look to my left, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Barton. Councilmember Landrum.
Yes, I, let's see, is it, would it be possible to get the simulations, the 3D?
I'm, I'm, I would. So planning commission discussed, interestingly enough, having fewer renderings in the ordinance for fear that people would cater their design to the architecture and the drawings, and so we, so they wanted those limited, so we limited the number of drawings that are in there. And that was a specific, you know, direction by the planning commission for that concern noted. So take that for what you will.
Okay, I was I was thinking that the the massing part, I I was kind of, well, I asked for, I asked to see what that, what, you know, I, it's hard for me to understand what 10, is it 10% of the, the
As you step up, you go back, and you have fewer square footage on the floor as you go up, kind of like wedding cake.
Yeah, and it's hard for me to conceptualize what that would be versus, like, say, you went from, you went, instead of 90%, you went to 80%. And from there, like, I I don't know what that looks like. So I would, I would like to see what that looks like, you know, kind of a
Yeah, we weren't, oh, sorry, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, we, we just didn't have the, you know, the the amount of time necessary to bring something like that forward to the meeting tonight, based on when we received the questions. So we just didn't have that ability to do that. And like, while it might be a massing, it it might be, we might be able to find examples of things that that look, that step back up. I mean, you can probably drive around and see examples of buildings that step back as you get taller. It's not an uncommon, you know, design concept or even requirement in many jurisdictions, is as you get taller, they have you step back, supposed to keeping the the face right at the, like, say, back of sidewalk or something like that.
Well, I know it's not uncommon, but I don't, I'm not aware enough to know the difference between 90%, 80%, 50%. I could probably figure out 50%, but I, you know, I I just, it's hard to conceptualize that. So it would be helpful for me to to see something like that. And let's see. Is there any way to, if we were to keep some kind of a review involved in the process? Is there any, do you see any reason not to do that?
Yes, because we would violate state law.
If you just had one thing like that?
Yeah, I mean, that would be the issue. I mean, we have the city attorney here. You can weigh in. I don't need to speak for legal requirements, but if that's the, that's the thing that would create a problem for us, I would say.
Uh, Councilmember Landrum, would you like me to comment?
Sure.
Um, so the core reason that this is here tonight is because these new laws require the city to do ministerial approvals if you meet certain standards. It does not allow the city to do discretionary review for certain projects. When those new laws kick in, I believe, January 1st, 2024, right now, the city has very little standards to apply to the ministerial review. So you either keep the current system, which is barely any standards, and the state law is forcing us to have barely any standards, or you adopt these. And we are on a deadline, because those new laws kick in in January 1st. So we could push this out one meeting, but if we're going to have a second reading and then have 30 days for this to be effective by January 1st, we're, we're up against the end of the calendar year.
Okay, and so if, if I'm understanding this correctly, it, this is, the whole the whole premise of this is for affordable, low-income, whatever you want to call it, housing?
So, no. I would say that's not the premise behind this. That's the premise behind the legislations being passed by the state.
Right.
The premise behind what's before you this evening is that legislation only allows us to apply objective design standards to the development that comes in underneath the legislation, and we don't have those.
So, but these developments are affordable or low, low, lower income? Or no?
We're proposing, we were proposing to apply the objective design standards that are in front of you this evening to a, to projects that would come in underneath the legislation. That's what it's for. These don't create, or you don't create affordable housing. These standards do not. They just create design guidelines for the development that would potentially come in underneath the various pieces of legislation that are either out there currently, or that'll be coming into effect on January 1.
I could add to that, Councilmember Landrum. The the goal of Sacramento is to promote affordable housing, and so that's their goal behind all of this. This is being proposed by staff as allowing there to be more standards that will be applied to this housing and development that Sacramento is going to require us to approve.
Right, but but the the purpose is for affordable.
Sac, Sacramento, yes, I mean, Sacramento's goal is to increase housing and particularly affordable housing. Whether or not that development shows up or not is, is, you know, whether the developers choose to develop. I mean, cities, you know, lay out the table, but the developers bring the food. So we we don't know if they'll show up.
Well, because of the criteria of some of these bills, isn't it, it has to be some somewhat affordable, right?
Well, yeah, all of the, all of, you're, you're right. So all of the the bills that we would be using this for have some amount of affordable housing in them. But the, the purpose behind the objective design standards is not to create affordable housing. It's just to have the standards in place if a project came forward.
Right. So, so if, if these are supposed to be, well, the state would like them to be affordable, some, some portion of these are required to be affordable. It seems like it would be in, in our area, I just learned this today, that the, the majority of the people that are threatened with homelessness or, you know, at risk of, you know, losing their, their homes is seniors in in this area. And so I'm thinking, why, why don't these have a requirement for an elevator? Because, I mean, people that, you know, have, if these are supposed to, I mean, it looks like these can be over two stories. How high can these be?
The requirement for elevators would come from the city's building code. It wouldn't, doesn't have anything to do with it.
It wouldn't have anything to do with that.
We have, we have, we adopted the building code, and it, and it tells you when you're required to have an elevator and when you're not.
We couldn't add this to, like, the height? I mean, if something's over X amount of stories, you couldn't add an elevator to these objective design guidelines? Standards?
We're required to follow the California building code. I mean, like, that's, we couldn't put something in here that would be contrary to that, because we're required to follow that.
But couldn't we add that as an extra? Because in normal building instances, you're not allowed to go up so high. So these, as I understand it, you have, there's a, an additional height allow, allowed.
So, I mean, I would say we we should not do that, because if you're putting an elevator in, in an area where it's not required, you're making this more expensive, which would be contrary to the requirement. Contrary to the idea that we can have objective design standards. We can't, we can't put objective design standards and apply them to a project that makes a project that reduces the number of units that you can have in the, in the project, and there's a number of other things that go along with it, and feel free to assist if you can think of anything. Call on friends. Anybody?
Sure, I can, Randy West, Russ with RM Design. So Scott's right, the building code dictates when an elevator is required, or if it isn't. In if the goal is affordable housing, which it sounds like it may be at least one of your goals here, that is adding cost to the, providing the housing, not reducing that, that opportunity or reducing that cost. So in the case of putting that into objective design standards, anything we do that is essentially arbitrarily increasing the cost is, would be subject to to review and, and someone trying to fight that.
So how high can these potentially be? How many stories?
They still need to comply with the height requirements in the zoning districts.
So they can't, so there's no
There's no height exception for
There's no, in, in any of these bills. Well, what if there's a new bill, like, because this, this also is for new bills that haven't been created yet. What if
It still has to comply with the zoning code. I mean, the height and
The height does?
Are still in the zoning code, and those are objective.
So the height, no matter what, how low the height, if we, if we had just 20-foot-high buildings, you couldn't, then you couldn't build a second story.
Well, depends.
So, so that, so you're lim, you're completely limited in these to what our zoning code is?
If there, if if there was legislation that passed, there's some legislation, if you have a major transit corridor, that do allow you to add additional stories and go up to like five stories or something like that. We don't have a major transit, you know, stop in town. That would be, it's defined under the California Government Code is, you know, having you know, transit coming every 15 minutes during the AM and PM peak hours. We don't have that. But if they were to pass it and say, just any project around it, say, a transit hub, or a bus station, I guess, for us, then you can go five stories, go five stories. You'd still have to comply with the building code related to elevators. The building code is the, is the guiding light there. It's not
Do we have that in our building code? That you, elevators are required?
We have the requirement for elevators that's in the building code, and we follow the building code.
So, so if that were the case, what triggers the, the use, the need for an elevator in our building code?
Usually it's, usually, sorry, this is.
Okay. Yeah, so the building codes speaks to what the use of the building is, and then how, in this case, we're talking residential. So it will speak to how many units are in it, to where it, whether it falls into the requirement to meet accessibility requirements. And once it's in that category, Chapter 11, then things like elevators kick in. And that's basically built based upon building size. So if you get a large building through this process, you will end up having to have elevators in it just by code.
Okay, what, what is the definition to you of a large building?
Depending on whether it's for rent or for purchase type, uh, units in a building, it's around four units is where that kicks over.
So any storied building with four units or more has to have an elevator?
No.
Okay.
There's specific, we don't, we don't have the building code in front of us, so we can't read you through the sections of it. It's very specific.
Okay.
This is Kimmy. I might just try, um, try to address what I, what I think might be the, um, maybe the concern. The reason why we wouldn't put, um, a requirement for elevators in this particular document, it's the same reason we wouldn't put requirements for fire escapes or for widths of what your balcony railings are. All these things are like very important to life safety, but they're already covered in the building code. So if we put them in here, at best, they would be really redundant because they're already covered somewhere else. At worst, they would be incredibly cost prohibitive. It would just be a nonstarter. An, an eleva- an elevator, for example, would completely kind of change the construction of that particular building. It could make it too expensive for an affordable builder to, um, come in and with the viable project, basically.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time understanding this. Like, okay, for instance, there's the, the project on, um, the 41, and that is multi storied, it's low income, and it does not have an elevator. And I'm just wondering how people are expected to like move all their stuff in and, you know, it just seems, it also seems unsafe, you know, for handicapped people or, um, you know, I, I, I just.
There's a lot of analysis that went into that project related to accessibility. You have rooms on the lower floor, they're accessible, and they're equal to the rooms that are on the upper floors. And so that's how they were able to do that. That is a simplification of how that was done, but there's, you know, a lot that goes into that analysis.
Right, but since we're, we're creating this right now, I'm wondering if we can not create something like that because that seems unsafe. Is there?
It's not unsafe.
Well, that's, that's, we could agree to disagree on that. I mean, it depends on who you are, I guess. You know, and what you're, what you're, I mean, what if someone had a visitor that was handicapped, or, you know, you can't control every situation, and it does seem unsafe to me.
Okay.
So, uh, and that's what we're doing right now is we're creating this, and I'm wondering at what point do we?
My recommendation would not be to include elevator requirements into the ordinance.
But it, but it could be.
You could include it, yes. It potentially leaves us open to legal challenge. Making the projects more expensive, reducing the number of units, those types of things, which would be my concern.
Okay. Okay. And then I was curious also about covered parking. I- is that a requirement, or that's just a, you could do that, or, um, could you clarify the, the parking options there?
Have to look at it, I'm sorry.
Um, this is Kimmy. So for the parking requirements, we, this was one section where we deferred to your zoning code that I understand it's not in, totally in place yet, and it's going to come before you again, parts of it anyway. Um, but since that effort was so very recent in determining, you know, what your parking maximums are, what the requirements for designing parking lots are, and, um, we, I, I believe we just made a reference to it. But we don't explicitly cover covered parking. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Our, our new ordinance is, also doesn't require covered parking or enclosed parking. We no longer require garages and those types of things in the new code.
And that, well, we haven't passed the new code yet, but so that.
It was adopted by the City Council in 2022. It's just not in effect because it hasn't been certified by the California Coastal Commission.
Well, I thought the planning commission was coming back with correct, corrections on that.
We are. I'm just saying that it was adopted by the City Council in 2022, and it does have that requirement that you don't need to have a garage. One of the reasons behind that was, um, because of the changes to ADU laws that allow you to convert a garage without replacing the parking, so.
Right, so has that been corrected in the new, by the planning commission at all, the parking requirements?
Corrected, what do you mean?
I mean, have they, I mean, they had some recommendations for, for the.
Not related to that.
Not related to parking?
Not related to covering enclosed parking, no. The changes that were made to the draft code that isn't in front of you this evening related largely to, um, some requested changes from the California Coastal Commission.
But can you say that again?
So the changes related to parking that will be coming before you when that item is agendized relate to requested changes from the California Coastal Commission related to access along the coast. Um, so we have a new map and it outlines areas there where you would be required to replace parking on site, um, because it's close enough to the water where you could have impacts if you were parking on the street to public access to the beach.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hi, I have two questions. And I'll stick to those two. Page 12, uh, the speaker talked about that, and we received some comments too about the parapet roof. Can that be removed if it's redundant? And if not, why would we not remove it? Because they're kind of weird requirement.
So my, my recollection is the planning commission had a specific discussion related to the types of roofs, and that was one of the ones they wanted to allow, because that is a typical roof design that we get in town. So that was one of the, why that was put in there. Any additions related to that? From you guys, I mean, that was my.
They, I mean, they did discuss this. This issue was brought up in one of the plan, one or more of the planning commission hearings. And it was discussed, and they considered removing the parapet, so, um, someone could clean out their gutters or sweep off the roof, but they decided that the value of the parapet was greater than not having the parapet, so.
We have, we have multiple buildings around town that have parapets.
What is the greater value? I guess I'm trying to, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's, it's kind of an integral into the design screening. So for solar panels and so forth, they did add a condition that said no exposed metal trim on the parapet.
Yeah.
And that was their final decision, but they did spend a lot of time discussing it.
Yeah, it, it is, it's a, it's a common architectural feature among the buildings in Morro Bay, specifically in the downtown. And that's why it's, it's in there. They, they thought it, it is a common design concept used in the development of buildings, and it does help screen things, and so that's why it's in there. And again, they talked about it at length.
But if the next, if page 17 addresses the screening, does, then doesn't that become redundant that you're, you're doing that? I'm just trying to understand if we're over, you know, adding on top of, and then a couple pages later taking you know, the same, I don't know, maybe, thank you, behind you.
I can weigh in a little bit on that. Th- those are two separate issues. Certainly the, the, the screening, which are, you probably already have in your design guidelines for mechanical screening can be provided in a variety of ways to begin with. It's not just a parapet on the front of a building. So that, that, that segment is focused on screening. The, the part that we're talking about here is the roof, and that had to do with the, the, the quality of the design, the quality of the, the roof, the, the articulation that could come out of that as opposed to just simply having a roof and a wall dropping right down without any design or articulate.
So not so much about the screening then?
So that, that is more of an architectural element that the planning commission wanted to, to see in there as part of the list of, of roof forms that they thought was appropriate.
Thank you for clarification on that. And my other question is, uh, something that was also brought up, um, by a speaker and then by our letters that we received from, um, several residents about the uh, overhang balconies, the cantilevering over the sidewalks. Why, why would we do that? I mean, because now you're shadowing the sidewalks from daylight.
Yeah, I mean, that was a, that was a specific request from one of the planning commissioners. The rest of the planning commissioners took under consideration and incorporated it into the, um, the ordinance. Uh, the idea behind it was to, uh, accommodate, um, outdoor space for units, and that was largely the reasoning given by the planning commissioner who put that forward. And the, uh, I guess the, the remainder of the planning commissioners didn't really have an issue with it, so that's how that got in there. It wasn't originally in, um, the design guidelines, it was added.
And if we wanted to remove that, would that alter tonight's, um, decision on, on the, um, item, just out of curiosity? Because I just, I see that as taking away daylight from your, your common areas to accommodate a luxury need from a resident, you know? I mean, you're basically taking away daylight from the general public on the sidewalks. Right?
Let me look at the requirement again.
Um, I don't, I don't remember the whole conversation with, um, the commissioner when we decided to put this in, but I do remember, um, talking about how open space is sometimes one of the hardest things to design for on a site, and certainly we want these units to be affordable, but we also want them to be livable. So that means providing some amount of balcony or deck, um, or in this case, an uncovered cantilever deck. I think it would, um, I think to the commissioner, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I do think that, you know, maybe this was an okay concession on a site where you need to be creative about where you put open space. If you have lots of other space constraints, you have to adhere to setbacks and you, um, you know, give, have to give your neighbors privacy and all these things. So it kind of affects where you might place, um, this type of deck on a site.
So, so that's a, it's an interesting concept, and I, I was, you know, kind of thinking a little bit more about it. Our, our current codes that like this, the, the cantilever section says, allows you to encroach into setbacks, and then also across the right of way if you have 12 feet of clearance. And, uh, so our, our current codes and the draft codes that are coming before you, um, include the ability to cantilever into setbacks. They don't i- currently include the ability to extend over a right of way, so this would be the difference here. This would allow you to cantilever, say, over a sidewalk or something like that, which is the, which is the kind of the deal. Some, I've seen ordinances that allow that type of thing at a minimal amount, and you want to make sure that you cantilever very far, depending on the the crown of the street, because you have delivery trucks, you want to be hidden, things like that. So this doesn't extend very far, it's a couple of feet, I guess.
It's two feet, it's two feet, and it requires a minimum of 12 feet of vertical clearance, and it also requires a right of way encroachment permit.
Yeah.
Yes. And I think it was because the requirement is to have the building at the back of sidewalks for certain jurisdictions, and so you didn't want to shrink the enclosed conditioned living space and not have room for a balcony, because balcony is required open space, private open.
So it would only be up to two feet though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarification on that, I appreciate. Would that be, would that look differently if it was required to be like 80% the, the, um, the cake thing, you know, like, would that look different?
12 feet and the two feet would still be the same.
So it would still protrude into the walkway? I mean, if you're set back.
This is a balcony, so it's presuming that it's, it's hanging two feet past the property line.
Right.
To the public right of way. Your building isn't going to be there.
Right, that's why I need to see this.
Thank you. Any more questions of staff comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
I, I'll make a motion. I think this is a really, I mean, I think we really need to do this. These objective design, um, standards, and I appreciate all the, all the effort that's been put into it. But I, I, I think that we need to, I mean, we have the zoning code that's coming through, that's going to set our height limit and as well as our setbacks, and I think it's premature to do this until we, to finalize this until we have that in place first. And I would like to make a motion that we wait until that has been done first.
I'll second it for the sake of a vote. So we have a motion and a second. And I'll ask for a roll call vote. Oh, if you'd like. Do you have something else you want to add?
Well, I mean, does anyone, does anyone else like have anything to weigh in on that, or? You know, I, I'm just thinking that we're, it's really how soon is the, um, are the, the, um, zoning code? When's that amendment supposed to happen?
Pushed it to the first meeting in November.
November. Okay, so that's pretty soon, and it seems like that is really pertinent to do all of this, and what, what, this isn't an emergency thing.
That being said, it needs to be done before the first of the year when the laws step in. And so it, it, we wouldn't have time. We only have one November meeting and one December meeting.
Right, I mean, it, it would be kind of a risk, like, if someone was just waiting at, at the planning department, ready to submit plans on January 1st? I mean, I don't know, it just seems like it's kind of backwards to do one before, this before the other. What do you think?
I, just kind of going off of some of your questions, Councilmember Landrum, I'm, I'm just thinking that a lot of that stuff probably will come into conversation when we look at the amendments to the zoning code. And I, I am definitely concerned about the timeline on this too, so. Yes, sorry, Betty, sorry. Um, I was saying that based on the, um, com- based on the questions that Councilmember Landrum was having just now, I think some of her questions and comments and discussion will come into when the amendments for the zoning code are brought back to us, and I, I just am concerned about the timing here, so.
Then I will go to, anything else, anybody? I'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
No.
May, Mayor Wickson?
Wow, I drew the short straw tonight. Holy mackerel. I know, so, you know, love me, hate me, I'm going to vote yes.
Motion carries three, two.
So with that, do you need anything from us right now, Mr. Graham?
Um, related to this, no. I mean, we'll come back with the zoning code, this will be with it, there won't be any changes to it, it'll just be with it. It's, it was designed as a standalone ordinance, and that doesn't change, so we'll just come back with the, it was going to be packaged when we finished it anyway, so.
Okay.
So either way, that's fine.
Thank you.
Scott, could I add one more thing before?
Yes, please.
Go, um, I just, I, I'm not entirely in the loop about, um, exactly the content that you guys will be discussing for the zoning code amendments, and we can talk about that later. Um, I just, I'm a little concerned about the contract that R M has to do with the work with the city, if, if, you know, additional renderings and things like that are, are desired, which, you know, we can, we can discuss that, but it might be, we might be running up against that timeline as well. Sorry to throw another wrench in there, but.
Our contract with R M will be ending because it's, it's grant based and the grant's ending. So we won't be bringing anything back. We won't have the ability, you know, to have additional renderings done or anything related to that, um, process.
Yeah, well, I guess we'll get with staff and work with you to figure out what we need to bring back with that. Thank you. Before we move on to future agenda items, I wanted to allow the city manager a moment, and I got ahead of myself when we started this hearing. Um, and she wanted to share two items, uh, related to item, uh, B1 with the garbage rate. There was just some information for the public, so please, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, on a, I just want to say that it, it was, it's very difficult to swallow that kind of increase and, and, and I, I, I wanted to assure the community that the city council made decision is not, not lightly decision for on them to, to make that decision, and also thank for the pu- public comments. A couple of information related, um, things I want to point out is that uh, is, it was my understanding that the rates increase largely was caused, uh, is, it was my understanding that the rates increase largely was caused by SB 1383 and that is statewide, it's a state, state law. There's municipalities or no one can change that unless the government change, change it. So I would say that perhaps if, because earlier and some repairs has, has asked, so what can we do? And this, this is happening and I would say that you could reach out to your state representative and let them know that this had, what kind of impact had, had, had a, a put on, on you as an, a end user. And then the other point of information I want to point out was that the government, the government, the state does issue, give us grant to help agencies to educate programs related to SB 1383. Public Works Department has gone, but the city was allocated. I cannot remember the amount, but it was perhaps $30,000 or $50,000. And so each, each agency was allocated a certain amount. And Morro Bay joined the other municipalities in the county to have a regional grant. And this was mentioned by IWAA, which is Irrigation Waste and Waste Management Authority. And what, Councilmember Barton is sitting on that authority and they have programs. And with city councils' consent, I could reach out to them to see if they could come here to make a presentation to, to the, to us.
Yeah, I think there would be sufficient, sufficient direction from us to do that. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that information forward too. I think education will be an important component and what options are and looking at grant money available. So thank you for that, Ms. Kimball. Future agenda items. Looking to my left.
I have one. So it was brought up tonight regarding support for the Marine Sanctuary. And I think it's important that we as a council consider whether or not we want to support it. I would like to ask for staff to come, if we were to bring this forward at a future meeting, that we direct staff to bring back information as to why the city didn't support it in the past. And if anything has changed, if any of those reasons have been incorporated into the proposal for the Chumash Marine Sanctuary and where we are on that and to get, I don't know, I just think that it would be good for us to, to have that item brought-
I'd support that. Yeah, I was, I was going to say the same thing. It just, yeah. That we take, that we possibly, yeah, look at what, what has come before and, yeah.
Thank you. Does that, you have sufficient direction on that?
Yes, we're just talking about timing because-
Timing, I know our agenda's very full.
Well, and that's critical timing, right?
I know our agenda's very full and, yeah, let's see what we can do.
The common deadline, which I'm-
So information on the city's position that's been to not support the sanctuary, the reasons why and, and anything that would change.
Yeah, those, those are part, past decisions, which-
Right.
We don't, we will have to do research. I will have to, Steph and I. And to respond, we certainly can do that. And, and at this moment, we pretty much just said that we can't, we have no position. That's basically what we're saying, so.
Maybe if we can just have a review for the public and for new council members. I know because I was here before when we've done resolutions, but I think that it would help us with this item coming to closing public comment. Thank you. And anyone else?
I have, I have a few. I, since the fire department, I mean, I'm just thinking this is not too early as far as the, if the potential of the best project in light of our last meeting, I would like to see if we could get staff to look into possible insurance costs and changes for the city and just review what that, what that, or, or look at what that potential could do to our insurance policy for the city as well as homeowner's insurance policies here.
Mr. Graham, is that any part of the discussion going on with Vistra that would be coming forward anyway?
We haven't had that specific conversation with them. No, they, we, we have had conversations with them about, you know, financial ramifications, preparing a report along those lines. But that's probably going to be an economic benefit, you know, analysis more than, than the opposite. So we could certainly ask them if they have any, you know, information related to what that might be.
Would that not be able to be swept into the economic analysis as far as insurance costs and things like that? Wouldn't that be considered part of the-
Well, I think if there's a desire by the council to understand what that is, we could certainly ask them about that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'm comfortable with that if that's-
Well, yeah, I, I think it's pretty critical that we know.
So we can incorporate that into that and circle it back?
Yeah, I'm happy to have to make that request to them. Yeah, we meet with them this week, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Also, I would like to ask staff to consider ways in which we can capitalize on our community's rich and diverse group of retired professionals. The police department relies on volunteers as, you know, one, the thing that made me really think about this is we keep getting emails from Morro Bay and Bloom and they're touting how much money they've saved the city. And I think it's really awesome that there's so many community volunteers that, that provide this service. And I think we should look at maybe other ways that we can incorporate our community and, and provide a sense of ownership. And, you know, I think it's just a win-win all around. And so I would like to, it's not a big rush or anything, but at some point it would be. I would like to see if we could look at that.
Sorry, Councilmember Landrum, I was just thinking out loud and wondering how we could craft that discussion because it's got really good points.
Yeah, I don't know.
So maybe we can, maybe you can meet with the city manager and then come back with some ideas of how we, what that would look like and then we could put it, push it out till later.
Maybe involve the senior-
Yeah, I like it. Yeah, yeah. So maybe you can work at, it's not time sensitive, so that would-
Yeah, definitely not.
We're pretty much booked through the end of the year, so.
Councilmember Landrum, I am liaison to the senior center, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last one is, since I made the announcement that I was having the town hall meeting here, it, it has come up that I, I would like to have a discussion and find out what our policy is regarding using, doing these sorts of things. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be using any city resources that I'm not, you know, supposed to use. And so, and I plan on doing more of these, so, yeah, I just would like to have a-
City council policy?
Yeah, yes, and have a, yeah, a discussion about that.
Mr. Newmeyer, any, anything to share on that?
Yes, so if there's a desire for individual council members to have a greater expansion than has been in the past of using city facilities and doing outreach and town halls, et cetera, then certainly we could put into the policies and procedures for council that, you know, council members can do X without having to go to the council to get authorization. So certainly it could be put into policies and procedures that council pre-authorizes certain activities if individual council members want to do that.
And that would come back as a future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. And is there support for that? I see two people.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, most of these are going to be up to the first of the year, so just a heads up for everybody. I have one item. I have one item based on, on the meeting we're going to have at the end of the month and comments made and all the information we're getting, I would like to either have a workshop or a joint city council public works advisory board meeting regarding our water portfolio, state water, IPR, reuse. All, I mean, that's just so much and I think it would help, just like our joint meeting with Planning Commission to bring that information forward and have a discussion, conversation. It wouldn't be actionable voting items, but just to do that and I'd be looking for support for that.
Yes, I, I support.
Thank you. And Mr. Qualick's not here, so that's easy. Scott's over there shaking his head.
I like that.
Thank you for staying this evening. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, staff. Have a good evening, everyone. We'll see you back in two weeks.